The Royal Commission into Defence of Veteran Suicide is now resumed. Please be seated.
Good morning, Miss Longbottom.
Good morning, Commissioner Caldes. Before we recommence the evidence of Mr Gainor, I would like to attend to the tender of the closing tender bundle. Thank you, operator, for displaying the list. It's some three pages. Commissioners, there are some unresolved confidentiality claims in relation to the documents identified in the list, so I tender the documents, subject to the resolution of those confidentiality claims.
Okay, thank you. So they'll be accepted on that basis and allocated the next lot of numbers?
And Commissioner, I just note that amongst the documents tendered is the lived experience witness statement of a witness identified as Sarah, and we thank Sarah for her cooperation with the commission and her evidence.
Indeed, thank you.
Thank you. Mr Gainor, when we finished yesterday afternoon, you were going to take an opportunity to familiarise yourself again with the DSIR guidance manual relevant to communication point, or points of communication, rather, with next of kin and family. I might just ask the operator if they could please display that document. It's igd dot triple zero seven dot triple zero two dot triple zero one at dot zero zero one zero. And if the operator could please expand paragraph thirty-three. Do you recall that paragraph, Mr Gainor?
Yes, counsel.
And you might recall, the question I asked yesterday is whether or not the manual gives guidance on communication with family or next of kin at any periods in between those four stages?
Counsel, the manual gives guidance on, on, that is the guidance in the manual on contact with next of kin and family as the bare minimum.
So where in the manual is there guidance about any other points of contact with family and next of kin?
Well, the, the manual addresses interviewing witnesses, and paragraph, sub-paragraph thirty-three B talks about interviewing the next of kin as part of an IGADF inquiry.
So we might be at cross purposes, excepting that this paragraph identifies four occasions on which it's appropriate to contact the next of kin and family. My question is, where the manual gives guidance on communication with family or next of kin, otherwise, then in those four stages identified in paragraph thirty-three?
Counsel, I disagree with your characterisation of the paragraph. It's not the four occasions when it's appropriate to contact family. It is at least four occasions when it's appropriate to contact family. So the, the nature of IGADF inquiries into service deaths is such that families who have lost a loved one are often grieving, and so it is very much, it's, there is no standard approach for contacting families, except on at least those four occasions. Some families do not want any contact at all. Some families want to be intimately involved in the conduct of the inquiry, and we endeavour to find an appropriate balance for, for them to be involved, certainly in terms of giving evidence. Other families don't want to be involved in the inquiry, but they do want to be involved in making submissions on draft reports.
And in terms of those matters you've just identified about striking an appropriate balance, is that recorded anywhere in this manual?
No, counsel.
Because I think, consistent with the matters you've just raised, the Royal Commission has heard accounts, as you say, about some families who feel there is too much contact, but equally, we've also heard accounts of the stress and concern that lack of communication can cause. And this is particularly so where there can be periods of up to six to nine months where the family hear nothing from your office about the status of a death inquiry. Are you aware of concerns such as that?
I'm, I'm aware of occasional lapses. The, the general rule in the office is that people connected with an inquiry are contacted on a monthly basis. But, but I, I'm aware that that has not always happened.
Amongst the evidence this commission has heard is from a witness who's known as MB2, who, whose husband died from suicide, and who gave evidence of sporadic communication with your office from the time of an interview. And at the time of the interview, she was told that the report would be finished in some two months' time. And then it was almost a year later when she was told that the report had been delayed, and that the reason for that was staffing issues and the Royal Commission ramping up and asking for notice to produce, which was taking priority. Are you aware of that particular account?
Yes, I, I am, counsel. That, there were two periods, two lengthy periods, where that, where that, where that witness to this commission was not, was not contacted, one of them. But, but that witness, certainly that situation has now been remedied, and the, and there have, there has been, in the, in the time, despite those, despite those two lengthy periods, at other times there has been regular contact.
And, and I think, as you just articulated, I thought you said there's a rule that there'd be a monthly check-in with family, is that right?
The, the, the general rule is that people connected with an inquiry will, will be contacted monthly to give them an update about the inquiry.
And is that rule articulated in this guideline?
It is not articulated in the guideline in, in those terms, no.
Is it articulated in any such terms in the guideline?
No, counsel.
Moving, putting to one side family and next of kin, you'd accept that the other category of individual who can be affected by a lack of communication with your office are witnesses, who, for example, have their conduct implicated or called into question by the circumstances of a death inquiry?
Yes, counsel.
This commission has also heard accounts of stress and concern caused to people in, in that cohort from a lack of communication from your office. Is there any standard operating procedure or provision in the guideline about how witnesses are to be communicated with by your office?
No, there is not, counsel.
Do you have a view about how that might be able to be addressed by your office?
Well, we need to amend the, the guidance.
Just going back to the point you raised before about there being no one rule for how a family might want to be engaged with by your office. I note that, at least in the updates to the CDF, it appears that your office maintains a running schedule of where particular inquiries are at, that's correct?
Yes, counsel.
Do you have a view about the workability of, for example, an electronic portal where a family member or a witness would be able to log on and get information specific to their particular case about where the inquiry is at?
I, I don't have enough understanding, counsel, of, of how such things could work, but, but I'm open to the idea.
At least in principle, that might be something that provides a neutral point of reference, so an individual doesn't have to chase someone up from your office for communication, and they can do it really on their own terms. Do you think that's something that's worthwhile, at least looking into?
Yes, counsel.
Now, if I could come back to the issue of communication with family and next of kin at the time of finalisation of the report. You recall, yesterday, we went to the briefing note with the CDF where you expressed your, I think you said, yesterday, you're appalled, but correct me if I'm wrong about that.
That was, that was the word I used.
That staff had not been routinely advising families of the outcome of death inquiries. I just want to take you-
Sorry, pardon me, counsel. It's staff had not been routinely advising families of the outcome of suicide inquiries.
Of suicide inquiries, yes, thank you for that correction. Could the operator please pull up the document that we've just been at, and go to dot zero 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 nine and expand paragraph twenty-eight? Just take an opportunity to read that, Mr Gainor. That is the part of the guidance manual that deals with communication with a family.
That, that's correct.
In cases where their family member has died by suicide. Just look at that last sentence. Does it surprise you to see in the manual that it provides that communication with the family on the final report is only at the direction of you, or on the request of CDF?
No, it doesn't surprise me, counsel, because I have, I have given a direction that the, that families are to be provided copies of the final, are to provide an op, in relation to IGADF inquiries into suicide. I have directed that families are to be, provide an opportunity to read an unredacted copy of the report, where they wish to do so.
Is that direction in writing?
No, counsel, but it is well understood in my office.
When did you provide that direction?
That is something that we have done since at least January 2020, counsel.
But you would accept, would you not, Mr Gainor, that there seems to be, at least on its face, a disconnect between what is recorded in the manual, and that is that communication with families with a debriefing on the final report, be it your direction, and the absence of any recording in that document, that that's to occur as a matter of course?
Yes, counsel.
How have you satisfied yourself that that understanding is well understood amongst your employees?
Counsel, the, as, because of what I learned a month ago, I have realised that I have not satisfied myself of, of that, and, and that is why I'm remedying the situation now.
And, I mean, has that realisation given you any cause for concern about the quality assurance processes within your office more generally?
Not more generally, counsel. It has given me cause for concern about the, about the, the quality assurance within that directorate, not with respect to inquiry, inquiries or inquiry reports, but in, in respect of aftercare. And that is why my strategic plan deals with, has a section on aftercare and also the post-engagement team.
Have you had cause, or do you have cause periodically to review the quality assurance processes in your other directorates to assure that there are no, assure yourself that there are no deficiencies there?
The, I rely on my, on my senior staff to, to give me that assurance. I also, the office is a small office. I have close relationships with my directors and my, my deputy and my directors. I rely on those engagements to, to give myself that assurance. The issue with, as I, and I canvassed some of these issues yesterday, the Directorate of Select Incident Review has had a, a high staff turnover, and of course, has been without its director for, for some time.
So you attribute the quality assurance concerns that you've raised, particularly to that staffing issue for that directorate?
Well, I, I think it's a large cause, but I take responsibility for, for the issue.
Now, if I can focus with you more generally on engaging with next of kin, particularly in the context of draft reports and non-disclosure orders. Could the operator please turn to dot zero zero one one and expand paragraph thirty-nine of the document? Just take an opportunity to read that, Mr Gainor. Now, the commission has heard evidence, both in the context of DSIR inquiries, but also in the context of DII inquiries, about a practice where a draft report will be given to relevant persons, including family or next of kin. But the provision of that draft report will have the consequence of the imposition of a non-disclosure direction under section twenty-one of the IGADF regulations. Are you aware of that practice within those directorates in your office?
Yes, counsel.
And the evidence that we've heard from recipients is that there appears to be a great deal of confusion, it would seem, about the effect of these non-disclosure orders. Are you aware of that concern?
I am not aware of that concern, counsel.
And I can tell you that some of the things we've heard is that they cause emotional distress because, for example, there is an apprehension about what an individual can share with others, given the fact of the non-disclosure order. Would you accept that that's a risk that would be associated with the exercise of this particular power?
No, counsel, because the purpose of sharing a draft inquiry report is to allow someone who's going to be affected by the inquiry to comment on the draft report and to make submissions on the draft report, while maintaining the integrity of the inquiry process and the confidentiality of the inquiry process. Now, the, the section twenty-one directions which my office issues allow consultation with lawyers and with clergy, clergy persons, and with qualified professional, qualified medical professionals or medical professionals, including, including counsellors. More recently, my section twenty-one directions were, have included the ability for people to, to share information with the Royal Commission. But at this stage in an inquiry process, the section, the purpose of the section twenty-one direction is to main, is to maintain the confidentiality of the, of the inquiry. And so it is, if it's, if a draft inquiry report is shared with an affected person or with the legal representative for a deceased ADF member, then it's appropriate that that person consider that inquiry report and not discuss it with others.
We might be at cross purposes. I'm not putting in issue that, in this particular case, the exercise of the section twenty-one non-disclosure power might be necessary in order to preserve the integrity of a draft report before it's finalized. That, that's really the thrust of your point?
No, that's the explanation of, of, counsel, as to why we don't, why, why we issue a section twenty-one direction in these, in these cases, and, and why it would not be appropriate for the next of kin, the legal representative of the, of the deceased ADF member, to consult more widely about the draft report.
Yes, so, so that's the purpose they serve, and your perspective is that purpose is a proper one, and I'm not taking issue with that. In terms of an order that's issued at this stage of the direction, are they ever cancelled, or do they expire?
The, there, there is no expiration on the, on the consultation about the draft.
And is any explanation given to a family member or next of kin or an affected person about the operation of an order issued at the time they view the draft report as compared to what they might be able to say when they receive a redacted copy of the final report?
Well, in, in most cases, families should receive a, an opportunity, or should have an opportunity to read an unredacted copy of the final report as well. So, so, but the, but this is, this, this process laid out in, in paragraph thirty-nine describes a way that we can share personal information in the inquiry report with people whose, whose personal information it isn't, and, and maintain the confidentiality of, of that information, and ma, and maintain the integrity of the inquiry process as a whole. Because the reports can change between the draft and the final.
I, I, I accept all of that. I guess what I'm attempting to communicate to you is that what we've heard is that these non-disclosure directions are a source of confusion to family members and next of kin, because, as paragraph thirty-nine provides here, one might be issued for the very valid reasons you've identified, to allow a person to comment on personal information, but at the same time preserve the integrity of the investigation before it's completed. But then, once the investigation or inquiry is completed and the report is published, there is some confusion about what a next of kin, what a next of kin or family member can or can't talk about. So that, that's really the point I'm trying to get you to grapple with, is this confusion about how those orders operate.
So, counsel?
Objection before the witness answers. The, the question is being put to the witness as though this is a general concern that's been raised. My understanding is it's a concern that's been raised in the evidence of one witness. I think, in fairness to the witness, if it is an issue that's raised beyond the one witness, who I understand that this witness is familiar with, the detail of that, at least in a general sense, should be put to him. If it's just an issue raised by one witness, it should not be put in a way as though it is a more general issue being raised by people.
It's an issue that's been raised, commissioners, in the evidence of Ms Shindy. It's also an issue that's been raised in a number of submissions that have been received by this Royal Commission. If it's necessary, I can compile over the adjournment those documents where that is recorded. But perhaps I can deal with it another way. I might just deal with it from a first principles point of view, if that addresses my friend's concern.
If your instructions cover other instances than Ms Shindy, it's appropriate for you to approach it in that fashion?
Yes, well, well, they, they do, they do, Commissioner, but I can address the issue my friend has raised in another way, so I'll do it that way. I might just ask if the operator could please display the IGADF regulations and expand section twenty-one? So this is the non-disclosure provision, Mr Gainor, that's referred to in paragraph thirty-nine of the DSIR guidance manual?
Yes, counsel.
I might ask if the operator could also please display alongside that section twenty-eight capital M of the same regulation? It's section twenty-eight capital M. Sorry, operator, it's section, section twenty-eight capital M of the IGADF Regulations 2016. No, that's not it. We might be having, we might just start with section twenty-one. So this is the provision. Can you explain to commissioners what type of inquiry is this non-disclosure provision captures?
So commissioners, this non-disclosure provision captures any IGADF inquiry, or can be applied in connection with any IGADF inquiry where, where the, the criteria in subsection one of that section are satisfied.
And so that criteria is that it is necessary to do so in the interests of the defence of the Commonwealth or to fairness to a person who you consider may be affected by an inquiry?
Yes.
Is there a particular, what is the scope of delegation in terms of the issuing of non-disclosure orders under this section?
So I have authorised others in my office to, to issue down to the director level. I, and sometimes my directions to assistance IGADF also authorise them to make non-disclosure directions.
And in terms of the making of those non-disclosure directions, is there any standard operating procedure or guidance manual about the occasions where it will be apt to exercise this particular power?
The, the guidance is contained in the authorisation, and the, 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 the person acting under my authority, it's at the director level that has to, I believe, that has to be consulted about this. I would have to consult my author, I don't have my authorisation document in front of me.
Okay. Is there any register kept of non-disclosure directions that are made under this section?
There is no register, but every non-disclosure direction is kept on the inquiry file.
So would you be able to, at any one point in time, obtain the information about the number of non-disclosure directions that are in operation and who they affect?
It would be possible to retrieve that information from, from the, the files that my office holds.
It would be an exercise of going through each file to find which one has those particular directions?
Well, all of the records are electronic, counsel, so it would be an exercise of, of making appropriate searches.
Now, there are three occasions in section twenty-one where the power can be exercised. In terms of draft reports, what category of power is utilised to issue a non-disclosure direction in respect of that?
The non-disclosure, the, the power that we have relied on, counsel, is that the draft report will contain information contained in oral evidence, and it will also contain references or parts of documents received during the course of an inquiry.
And in terms of next of kin who are offered an opportunity or who are asked to read a draft report, or indeed persons affected, are they informed that reading the draft report will have the consequence that a non-disclosure direction will be issued?
So these, these things do not happen just between my office and the next of kin. The Director of Defence Council Services independently appoints a lawyer to act for the interests of the deceased. And those lawyers will be part of this process of, of, the, the process of sharing a draft report with a, a next of kin. And the purpose of that is so that the lawyer can assist the family to articulate any concerns they have with the draft report, and then the lawyer, on behalf of the interests of the deceased, on instructions from the next of kin, can make, can make submissions in respect of the draft.
So am I right to understand you don't see it as a responsibility of your office to inform family or next of kin, either directly or through their lawyer? to inform family or next of kin, either directly or through their lawyer, that if they read a draft report, they will be subject to a non-disclosure direction under section twenty-one?
Well, they are aware of the section twenty-one direction before they read the draft report, counsel.
How are they made aware?
Well, the section twenty-one direction accompanies the draft report.
Okay, so when they walk into the room to read the draft report? Or are they given prior notice? Or what practice does your office have in relation to the making of these directions?
So the Director of Select Incident Review usually consults with families about the section twenty-one direction through the lawyer that the Director of Defence Council Services has appointed.
And is there any standard operating procedural guideline about what that engagement should look like?
No, counsel, because it's dealt with between my office and the lawyer that the Director of Defence Council Services has appointed.
I guess what I'm struggling with a little bit, you talk about the lawyer that's been appointed, but obviously this is a power that's exercised by your office. So accepting that it might not be apt for your office to directly engage with a family where they've got a lawyer appointed. Am I right to be understanding you to say that there is some independent responsibility on the lawyers rather than your office to inform a family member or next of kin about the operation of these orders? I just want to make sure I understand your answer.
So the section twenty-one direction sets out what the direction is. It sets out the reasons for it and it sets out the consequences of non-compliance. But the involvement of the lawyer acting for the interests of the deceased is so that if need be, the terms of that direction can be changed.
And could a family member elect not to read a draft report because they do not want to be subject to a non-disclosure order?
Yes, that's their prerogative.
Okay, now, in terms of twenty-one C, could you explain to commissioners the operation of that provision and whether or not it's used by your office?
So section twenty-one, subsection one, paragraph C is a provision that's used by my office, counsel. And we use it in cases where we provide a report to families to either read in unredacted form. We usually use a direction as well when we provide a redacted copy of a report to families for them to keep.
So if you could just explain that, when you provide a redacted copy, a direction under section twenty-one one C will also be issued? Am I right to have understood that?
That is correct.
And why is that?
There are, and this is a matter that is a subject of review by me to make sure that the original reasons that we have been doing this are still sound. The nature of an IGADF inquiry, commissioners, is that we encourage witnesses to come forward and to provide confidential information to us and we assure them that their information will, to the extent that we can do so, be kept confidential. So the first reason that we issue a section twenty-one direction in the case of a redacted copy of a report is because the report will still contain information that has been provided to us by other witnesses in confidence. The second reason is that in this internet age, it is far easier to publish copies of reports. And so this is a way of maintaining the confidentiality of that information. And the third reason is that I'm aware, this was not in connection with an IGADF inquiry, that I'm aware that, and I don't, I'm about to talk about someone's, well, I will, apologies, I'll have to phrase my language so I don't discuss someone else's personal information. But there has been, there has been one occasion when someone who was involved in an inquiry or part of an inquiry and whose involvement was published, an ADF member who died by suicide. And that was some time ago, but that has been another reason or that is one of the reasons why we adopt this course of issuing a section twenty-one direction. It's to preserve the confidentiality of the information that witnesses have given to us and also to make sure that no further harm is caused.
So this is a non-disclosure direction that will be issued in respect of a redacted report? That's right?
Yes, counsel.
In terms of the scope of the non-disclosure direction that's issued in that circumstance, does it specify particular categories of people that the recipient can speak to about the report?
If the recipient requests that, then it can and often does.
So in order for it to have any carve-out provisions, the recipient has to specifically request that?
Well, once again, this process takes place in the context of a discussion with the lawyer for the interests of the deceased as well. And so those carve-outs can be arranged through that process.
So you view it as the responsibility of the lawyer for the recipient to raise the issue of carve-outs for a non-disclosure direction?
What usually happens, counsel, is that my staff will talk to the lawyer and find out who should be included in a section twenty-one direction so that those people, the report can be shared with those people.
And again, is that practice reduced into any standard operating procedural guidelines?
No, it's not in the guidance.
In light of the concerns that you've raised with the CDF about communications with next of kin in the context of final reports, what quality assurance mechanisms have you got in place to ensure that the practices you have described are adhered to?
So we are starting, counsel, in line with my strategic plan for twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-five, a new after-care model. And that after-care model will include a post-engagement team. The purpose of the post-engagement team is to communicate with people, particularly complainants, respondents in other IGADF inquiries and in IGADF inquiries into service deaths, to review the file and to make sure that communication has been maintained and also to make sure that these other arrangements have been affected.
So that is prospectively. My question is directed to what is in place presently and has been throughout your tenure in office?
So I have relied on my inquiry directorates and my inquiry directors to do these things. And I have regarded it as their responsibility to make sure that persons who are affected by inquiries and persons who are involved in inquiries are kept informed of inquiry process and also that section twenty-one directions are, you know, that they are issued in an informed way at the end of an inquiry.
And I understood you to say before that you've had cause recently to revisit the exercise of the power to issue a twenty-one one C direction? Did I understand that correctly, the circumstances in which that will be done?
No, it is something that I consider from time to time, yes.
And moving then to section twenty-eight capital M, can you just explain to commissioners the overlap between that power and the section twenty-one power and when the section twenty-eight capital M power will be exercised?
So there is quite a bit of overlap. The section twenty-eight capital M power was introduced later than the section twenty-one power. The purpose of the section twenty-eight M power is broader than the section twenty-one power and it relates to inquiry-related information. And that has a specific definition under that part.
And in terms of the exercise of the power under section twenty-eight capital M, you've spoken about it having a particular application in terms of the definition of inquiry. Is there any overlap between the definition of inquiry in that part and the definition of, I withdraw that? Is there any overlap in the power that can be exercised under section twenty-one and section twenty-eight capital M? Or are they two discrete powers that can be exercised in a particular occasion? So just to give a practical example, could a section twenty-eight capital M non-disclosure direction be issued in relation to a death inquiry, for example?
Yes, it could be, counsel.
So there is some overlap between those two provisions?
There is, but the definition of inquiry-related information is broader than merely inquiry report, which is mentioned in section twenty-one.
Okay, so it's a broader power. In terms of the exercise of the section twenty-eight capital M non-disclosure power, are there any particular guidelines that are issued about its exercise or quality assurance mechanisms in place to ensure your satisfaction that the power has been exercised properly?
No, there are not, counsel. The section twenty-eight capital M directions have been principally issued in connection with the IGADF Afghanistan Inquiry.
So would it be fair to say, given that it's not a power that your office tends to use outside of that particular inquiry process?
I would agree with the statement. It's not a power we tend to use.
Now, I'm going to stay with death inquiries, but I'm going to shift topics slightly and ask you some questions about the timeframe for inquiries. Operator, can you please display document number IGD dot zero zero one zero dot zero zero one six dot triple zero one at dot zero zero one three, paragraph six? While that's coming up, in your view, Mr. Gaynor, would you accept that the time taken to complete a death inquiry might be a source of stress to family members and next of kin?
Yes, counsel.
And it might be a source of stress to other individuals, for example, whose conduct is implicated in the subject matter of the death inquiry?
Yes, counsel.
I might try and give the document reference again. IGD dot zero zero one six dot triple zero one dot zero zero one one. And if the operator could please turn to dot zero zero one three? Now again, commissioners, this is one of the CDF noting briefs by Mr. Gaynor, which won't be displayed publicly. I propose to take Mr. Gaynor to paragraph six on the screen that's displayed. Mr. Gaynor, this is from your July twenty twenty-three update to the CDF.
Yes, counsel.
You note there that as at the date of that briefing update, you had a total of fifty-seven open death inquiries, twenty-three of which were suspected suicides?
Yes, counsel.
And if I could ask the operator to please turn to the next page? Now, I'm not going to mention any of the names, but you will see, if the operator could please go to the bottom of that page, sub-paragraph O, at least one of the deaths, the subject of those open inquiries dates back to twenty twenty? You would accept that, Mr. Gaynor?
Yes, counsel.
Now, Mr. Gaynor, am I right that your staff have been preparing an action plan to remediate the backlog of death inquiry cases?
Certainly, the focus on completing suicide inquiries, that there has been a focus on completing all death inquiries, but also particularly those relating to suicide as quickly as possible.
And does that action plan involve engaging an external law firm to assist?
It has, counsel, and that's been ongoing since November last year.
And as I understand it, the law firm is Ashurst?
Yes, counsel.
And lawyers within that firm have been appointed assistant IGADFs with the authority to undertake all aspects of the death inquiry process?
They have been appointed assistants IGADF, but they have been working with a very experienced senior officer, who is a former Director of Enquiries and Investigations, a senior reserve officer. And so it would be wrong to say that these inquiries have been outsourced to Ashurst. They have been, lawyers from Ashurst are gathering evidence and, but they are under the supervision and of, as I said, a former Director of Enquiries and Investigations, who has knowledge and experience of the IGADF inquiry process.
So when you say they are gathering evidence, they're conducting witness interviews and the like?
They're conducting witness interviews. They are drafting reports, collating information and drafting reports. But there's also a lot of work that happens in my office in terms of gathering departmental records and also facilitating those lawyers to interview witnesses, making sure that witnesses who are interviewed have appropriate support in place before they are interviewed.
The operator can put that screen down. Is there any particular training that those lawyers have been provided with for the purpose of exercising these functions?
I do not know the level of detail. I do know that there was some training conducted at the start of this last November.
Do you know the form that training took?
No, I do not, counsel. But I do know that they also received briefings from the former Director of Enquiries and Investigations and also the former Director of Select Incident Review about IGADF inquiry processes and the way that we, not just the way that we conduct inquiries, but how we conduct inquiries.
Mr. Gaynor, do you know if your office has engaged any subject matter experts to assist with determining the cause of death or its connection or otherwise to service with respect to these open death inquiries?
I am unaware of the details of. I am unaware of the details of expert evidence that the inquiries might have obtained.
Do you have a view about whether or not it would be apt for your office, either as part of its permanent staff or contracted staff, to have that expertise?
Can you just clarify what expertise you mean, counsel?
Well, the DSIR manual records that the causal factors commonly associated with death by suicide are multi-dimensional. You would accept that?
Suicide has many causes, counsel, yes.
So my question is whether or not, either as part of your permanent or contracted staff, you have any multi-dimensional expertise to help you determine whether a death was in fact suicide? And whether it was service-related?
Well, I'm not sure what you mean by multi-dimensional expertise.
So, for example, a forensic psychologist, a social worker? How do you, what expertise does your office have to determine those questions? Because it's not a matter you would accept that lawyers are apt to decide.
No, it's not, counsel. But my office has people with social work backgrounds. It has people with policing backgrounds. And we also have people with psychology backgrounds, and we have psychologists as well. So that, those sources of information are already available to people undertaking inquiries in my office. Now, and should those issues arise in any inquiry, then the person who is the strategic manager for those inquiries, be it the relevant director, or be it, in this case, in the case of Ashurst, the former director of inquiries and investigations, then my expectation is that they would consult those people in my office.
And what quality assurance mechanisms do you have in place with respect to that?
I rely, counsel, on their professionalism and their expertise.
You are the IGADF, these are functions that are entrusted to you. Do you consider it sufficient just to rely on your staff? Or do you think that you need to have any formal mechanisms in place to ensure that your expectations are met?
Well, in connection with suicide inquiries, counsel, I am the ultimate reviewer of all suicide inquiry reports. If I read a report and I feel that such consultation would be useful, if I read a draft report and feel that such consultation would be useful, then I would identify it at that stage, if my directors have not previously, or my deputy or my directors have not previously identified it before.
Then presumably you have an awareness of the occasions? And let's just take, for example, the last three years, where either you have directed or you're aware from the reports you sign off on, that subject matter expertise has been obtained. Can you tell the commissioners how often that occurs?
Counsel, I can't tell you how often it occurs, and it may not even be specifically mentioned in the report. The subject matter expertise that I'm talking about will guide the inquiries. When subject matter expertise is necessary for evidence in an inquiry, then we, then that evidence, the witness and that evidence will be referred to in the inquiry report. So that includes medical evidence. We also get psychological evidence from time to time. I can't tell you how often that occurs, but certainly if, particularly when a family has concerns about the medical treatment that the deceased ADF member received, then we will usually get independent medical evidence to consider their concerns.
So, one occasion on which you will get independent expertise is when a family member raises concerns about medical treatment. Just focusing on the multi-dimensional nature of suicide, what about, for example, where the evidence on its face demonstrates that one of the factors is a relationship breakdown? As a matter of course, in that circumstance, will you obtain subject matter expertise to assist you to identify if that is the only cause? Or if, for example, there is a service nexus that is required for the exercise of your functions under section five? How do you go about, you're a lawyer by training, I'm a lawyer by training, we don't have that expertise? How do you arm yourself with that expertise to perform your functions? Will that happen as a matter of course?
Counsel, the, these things do not happen in isolation. When there has been a relationship breakdown, we do look at the deceased ADF members, or as part of all of our inquiries, we look at the deceased ADF member's service history, their posting history. Those are certainly issues that we consider as part of our inquiries.
Who is the we, and what expertise do they have to determine that causal nexus?
Counsel, the we is me, my deputy, my directorate of select incident review team, the, we, you know, we don't routinely, unless there are medical factors, we don't routinely seek that input from others.
Do you accept that that's a gap in your investigation process?
Well, I'd need to think about it more, counsel, but I don't, at first instance, accept that it's necessarily a gap.
Coming back to the question of expertise, so you've mentioned medical records. Are you talking there about medical records you obtained from Joint Health Command?
Medical records that we obtained from Joint Health Command. Sometimes, family give us access to medical records that relate to treatment that an ADF member or deceased ADF member has received outside.
So again, coming back to this question of expertise, what expertise do you, your deputy or your staff, armed with those records, have to determine questions, multi-dimensional questions of causal nexus between a particular death and whether it relates to service? Or indeed whether it was suicide?
Well, in the case of suicide, counsel, we, where there are no external factors that appear to suggest that a death is not suspected suicide, then we treat that death as a suspected suicide. By external factors, I'm talking about, I'm not talking about the dimensions that you are talking about. I'm talking about, you know, if the circumstances of death are unclear, then we treat it as a suspected suicide. In terms of that multi-dimensional input, we do not, outside of the medical and psychological sphere, we do not routinely seek that input, other than from the people in my office who have, once again, backgrounds in social work and their own lived experience.
Let's unpack that. So, is there a psychologist as part of your core staff?
Yes, counsel.
And is that psychologist engaged for the purpose of giving expertise about cause of death, service nexus, and recommendations in relation to a death inquiry report?
They are not specifically engaged for that purpose, counsel. They are engaged to provide psychological input in respect of any IGADF inquiry. So it does, sorry.
I'm not quite sure how your answer responds to my question. Does the psychologist that is engaged by your office routinely provide expertise in terms of death inquiries and the issue of whether the death was by suicide? And its causal nexus to service and recommendations that might be made in the report?
Not routinely.
You've said that you have social workers in your office. How many social workers?
I didn't say I had social workers, counsel. I said I have people with a social work background. It changes from time to time. We have some staff movement. I can, without thinking too hard, I can think of at least one person in my office who has a social work background.
And is that one person in your office who has a social work background, are they called upon in relation to death inquiries to provide expertise as to the cause of death? Whether it was by suicide, service nexus, and recommendations that might be made in a report?
No, counsel. Not routinely.
Just shifting back to this question of multi-dimensional causal factors for suicide, I can take you to this, but we heard evidence over the last two weeks from Lieutenant Colonel Spenderlove, who is the acting director of the DSIR, that the directorate doesn't delve into, for example, relationship breakdown or any other multi-dimensional factors when conducting a death inquiry. Is that a proposition you'd like to comment on?
Well, I don't, I'd like clarification of what delve into means.
Okay, we might just pull up the transcript reference if we can. If the operator could please display transcript seventy nine dash seven seven zero four?
Sorry, which part of that would you like me to read, counsel?
If you can read particularly the question from the chair at line thirteen and the answer given by Lieutenant Colonel Spenderlove at line twenty.
Lieutenant Colonel Spenderlove has only worked in my office for, he's worked there for less than two years. So I, and I can't at the moment comment on whether what he has said there is correct. And my reason for that is that it would be, certainly, as I said earlier, when we look at a death by suicide, we do look at the deceased's posting history. We also look at the deceased's relationship, and any relationship factors. I can't, at the moment, think of reports where we have drawn a link between service and relationship breakdown, but I'm not certain that we haven't in the past.
But, at least as matters presently stand, I understand from the answers you've given me previously, you have no in-house expertise that is routinely called upon to help you determine causal factors where the suicide is multi-dimensional. That is correct?
We have no in-house expertise. We draw on external expertise when necessary.
And is there a common pool of external expertise that you draw upon? And could you identify that for the Royal Commission?
There is no common pool. We, in the case of psychological expertise, we draw on the psychologists that we have to identify someone who is going to have the appropriate skills that are necessary and the appropriate knowledge and expertise in connection with the circumstances of that particular death. And it's the same for medical expertise as well.
Is there any standard operating procedure or guideline given to those persons who are conducting death inquiries who don't have that specialized subject matter expertise about when they need to call upon it?
There is no specific guidance, but this is part of the standard inquiry process of if an issue is identified and expert evidence is required, then that expert evidence will be obtained.
But how can someone without the expertise know when to call upon subject matter expertise? Sorry, I withdraw that. Let me put it this way. Say, for example, there is a death that's caused by a single-vehicle accident. How can someone without any psychological expertise determine even when they should be calling out to get that assistance to determine whether a death is by suicide? And if it is by suicide, whether or not it has a causal nexus to service? You or I as lawyers wouldn't have that expertise?
Well, counsel, I would, I don't disagree that we don't have expertise, but I disagree that we can't identify the need for expert evidence. Expert evidence is called in courts all over Australia every day because lawyers identify a need for it. In the case, using your example of a single-vehicle collision, we are always very careful to look into all of the circumstances of that collision, the work tempo of the deceased leading up to that collision. We do look at relationship issues. It's what I said earlier, that in the case of a single-vehicle collision, we always suspect suicide as a possibility.
And could your office provide, if asked, a summary of those occasions upon which, in relation to each death inquiry, it has obtained material subject matter expertise in determining whether a death was by suicide and whether it had a causal nexus to service? And what the subject matter expertise you obtained was?
Well, yes, we could, of course, counsel. But I'm not certain that the, sorry, I won't, go on.
So what were you not certain about?
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
Just in terms of the sort of the process, in terms of the guidance that's given to your directorate, I might just briefly go back to, if I could, the directorate guidance manual at I G D dot zero 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 seven dot zero 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 two dot zero 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 one. And if the operator could please turn to paragraph nine? So you'll see there that there's reference to obtaining medical evidence, but the extent of it seems to be, um, medical and psychology files from Joint Health Command. And then if the operator could please turn to dot zero-zero-zero-five and the assessment phase. And again, paragraph eleven and twelve, and going across to paragraph fifteen on the next page. There is reference to gathering particular categories of information. But at least on its face, there doesn't seem to be any specific guidance about when subject matter expertise is to be obtained.
No, there is not, counsel.
So you are really reliant on your staff to determine for themselves when it should be obtained?
Yes, counsel, although my staff do not operate in isolation. They operate in consultation with my deputy. They also operate in consultation with me. If they have these, if, if they have these issues, uh, the, th- these are the types of matters that we would, would discuss, the need for, for expert evidence in, in cases where, uh, there are, wh- where that evidence is seen as being useful.
So can you tell commissioners then, given that this is a matter that you have oversight of, say, for example, in the last six months or year, how often the need to obtain subject matter expertise has been discussed? And that course has been taken?
Uh, I, I cannot, I, I cannot give an answer to, to that question without, uh, you know, without going back and looking at, at the inquiries that we've done.
But it's certainly not something that's top of your mind.
How do you mean it's not something that's top of my mind?
You can't readily recall a particular occasion on when that's happened.
I can recall occasions on when it's happened, counsel. Um, I can recall several occasions when it's happened. I just can't recall precisely when they were.
Now, accepting what you say about the length of Lieutenant Colonel Spenderlove's, the evidence that he gave is that there is only one occasion on which he has obtained a separate medical opinion in relation to a death inquiry. And it wasn't a case concerning a suspected suicide. You wouldn't have any reason to doubt the evidence Lieutenant Colonel Spenderlove gave in that respect?
Well, I, um, as you know, counsel, um, was not allowed to watch his evidence. I, I have no reason to, to, uh, to, to doubt what he has said, but I, but that's in the, in the absence of any knowledge of its context.
I just want to come back to the question of timeframes. Can the operator please display document exp dot zero-zero-one-one dot triple zero-one dot zero-zero-three-seven at dot zero-zero-three-nine? And please turn to the next page. Actually, please, operator. Sorry, the next. The next. If you could keep going, please, to the next page. Uh, yes, and expand, um, the section of the page under the heading Key Performance Indicators. So, Mr. Gaynor, this comes, um, from an earlier annual report. It's the twenty-twenty financial year annual report. You'll see there's reference there to the implementation of a set of key performance indicators to assist in measuring the quality and efficiency of the outputs of your office. Can you give the commissioners an overview of what those key performance indicators are and where they can be found?
So, counsel, the key performance indicators are now contained in my strategic plan. My recollection is that they were contained in my strategic plan dating from, from twenty-twenty.
And you'll see from the last sentence, as I understand it, your intention was to use the KPIs to hold your office accountable for future reporting periods?
Uh, that's correct, counsel.
So the expectation at least in placed in the twenty-twenty annual report is that there would be some measure of your office's compliance with its key performance indicators in subsequent annual reports?
Well, um, I, I don't agree with, with that implication. The, the statement is that I will use the KPIs to hold my office accountable in, in future reporting periods.
So how do you hold your office accountable then? What mechanism do you use?
The, um, we have struggled with identifying appropriate KPIs in my office.
I'm sorry, I, I had thought you had identified KPIs. Have they not been identified?
No, we have identified, we, we, we have, um, identified KPIs. What we have struggled to do is to identify, uh, meaningful KPIs. Uh, and the reason for that is because of the difference in the nature of the work of my office. The complete, the, the, our most crucial KPI is timeliness. But the problem that we have with the KPI of timeliness is that an IGADF inquiry can vary in complexity. And the time taken to complete an inquiry depends on the availability of witnesses, which in the defence environment can be very difficult because witnesses will be deployed overseas, they'll be deployed on ships. The other factor affecting timeliness of an IGADF inquiry is the complexity of the matters under inquiry. In the case of death and certainly in the case of suicide, those matters are, are very, can be very complex, but in relation to other inquiries as well. The time, timeframe to complete an inquiry depends upon the number of witnesses in the inquiry. And the other factor, main factor affecting timeframes is the availability of suitably qualified inquiry staff to undertake the inquiry. In terms of KPIs, my office has attempted to use comp- uh, complexity matrices to, um, try to identify how complex an inquiry is going to be at the outset, so that we can then come up with a meaningful KPI. And certainly that's what we were doing, uh, in twenty-twenty.
And, and so what have you done since, since twenty-twenty? Where are your KPIs at?
So we have modified our, our KPIs, the, the, our ability to assess complexity, the complexity matrices that we spent a lot of time developing in terms of identifying the number of likely, the number of likely witnesses, the locations of likely witnesses, the involvement of other agencies, not just defence, but, but, but other organisations as part of the inquiry. All of those attempts ultimately were, um, were, were fruitless, for want of a better word. And so we've adopted a new set of KPIs in our new strategic plan.
So just to make sure I understand, um, you say your new strategic plan, are you talking about your strategic plan from twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-five?
Yes, counsel.
So there has been no KPI since an attempt to establish one was foreshadowed in the twenty-twenty financial year annual report until the new strategic plan?
No, we've, we, a- as I indicated, we were working on the matrix, the complexity matrix. We were trying to refine the complexity matrix. We were, we realised that our early attempts were, um, were providing an inaccurate assessment of the complexity of an inquiry and how long an inquiry was going to take. We, we learned a lot along the way, but, but ultimately we learned that our attempts to assess at the outset of an inquiry how long it was going to take were, were simply, um, not going to deliver an accurate forecast of the complexity of the inquiry and therefore to judge what, how long the inquiry would take, how many staff would be required. So we've, we've, uh, so we've adopted a new set of KPIs.
So just focusing on the period twenty-twenty until twenty-twenty-three, accepting that you've said there is complexity in terms of developing a KPI. Has there been a KPI for each Directorate that has been applied during that period?
So there were KPIs, uh, in, in the previous strategic plan. We have attempted to, um, uh, monitor or, or identify the performance of parts of the office according to, to those KPIs in, in, in the years since twenty-twenty. But ultimately, particularly in the conduct of inquiries, we have realised that it is impossible to, to, certainly in relation to timeliness, to, uh, to impose a KPI of timeliness because of the sheer breadth of complexity of different types of inquiries that the office conducts.
So let's put complexity and timeframes to one side. Take, for example, DSIR. As at twenty-twenty, were there any other KPIs for the performance of that particular Directorate?
Uh, no.
What about DII, putting to one side timeliness?
Um, I, I would have to go back and look at the, um, at the strategic plan.
And let's look at the most recent strategic plan. I, I don't think we have seen a copy of it yet, but we will, I understand, later today. Again, in terms of DSIR and the current strategic plan, there are key performance indicators for that Directorate?
Uh, counsel, I would have to, to look at the plan to, to see what, exactly what the KPIs are. And I know there are no, um, KPIs for inquiries, for the, for the DII inquiries, uh, other than for the assessments that are conducted.
So if we could just bring up that passage of the twenty-twenty annual report again. That concept of accountability is enshrined in that report. I think you, you rejected the suggestion that that accountability would have a public face in terms of being reflected in annual reports. Do I understand that right?
Well, we certainly have, um, reported on performance in subsequent reports.
But you haven't measured that performance against any particular KPIs? Because there weren't any that were effective at the time? Have I understood that correctly?
Uh, we haven't measured the, uh, performance against the KPIs while we were, um, trying to, to grapple with the, the complexity matrix that I mentioned earlier.
And so that's why, well, tell me if this is why. I might just take you to the next annual report. It's document exp dot zero-zero-one-one dot triple zero-one dot zero-zero-seven-seven. And if you could please go to dot zero-zero-eight-two. This is the same section of the annual report where the previous report mentioned KPIs, and I can put them up against each other if that would assist. But there's no mention here about key performance indicators. Why is that?
Uh, well, I think if we go to the, to the functional directorates, there should be, there should be mention of performance. I know there is in, in subsequent reports. I, uh, it's a, it's a long time since I've looked at this report, counsel.
So we should expect to find the detail of what the KPIs and each Directorate's performance against that?
No, no, counsel. I've, um, we, as I, as I mentioned earlier, we, you, you won't find detail of the KPIs. You won't find, but you will find, uh, comments about the, the performance of that Directorate.
Okay, well, let's go into this particular report. The Directorate of Inquiries and Investigations. Operator, can you please turn to, uh, dot zero-zero-eight-nine? So you'll see that's the heading section about this Directorate.
Yes.
If you then go to dot zero-zero-nine-one and expand the heading Performance. So that is there how you reflect the performance of a particular Directorate?
Yes, counsel.
If we then go to the Directorate of Military Justice Performance Review at dot zero-zero-nine-two and then turn to dot zero-zero-nine-five and expand the paragraph under the heading Performance. That is how, for that Directorate, you have reflected the performance of its functions?
Uh, yes, counsel, because, uh, an audit is a, a more defined process than an inquiry.
So timeframes there is the benchmark?
Well, the benchmark for the production of the audit report is the, is the timeframe. But the production of an audit report is more con- the production of audit reports is far more consistent across those reports than the production of an inquiry report. The Afghanistan Inquiry was a, a, a report of many, of several thousand pages involving over four hundred witnesses. Some of our inquiries, uh, have shorter reports, thankfully, and, and also have far fewer witnesses.
But this, we're focusing here on audit reports. I, I'm just struggling to understand the connection with-
Well, the, the connection, counsel, is that a benchmark for an audit report and for an audit is a far simpler benchmark to, um, to impose across all audit reporting than, than it is possible to impose a timeframe benchmark across all inquiry reporting.
A- and I'm not, I'm not, um, caviling with the proposition that the performance indicators for particular aspects of your function might be more complex in one case than another. Really, my questions are directed to understanding how your office is held accountable for its performance and what the public-facing aspect of that is. Because you would accept that, given the important functions with which you've been charged, there needs to be some metric of the performance of those functions and your office needs to be accountable for them.
So, counsel, the metric is to make sure that reports are conducted fairly. So counsel, the metric is to make sure that reports are conducted fairly and according to law. And unfortunately, sometimes that takes time. In the case of one recent inquiry, uh, finalisation of the inquiry and production of the report was held up by several months because an affected person in that inquiry, uh, was, was, uh, in a hospital for several months, but wanted to, participated in the inquiry. And so, and as I said, he was, that, that person was an affected person. And so we held up the, uh, the inquiry for several months, waiting for, uh, for that person's availability to, uh, respond to, and to a notice. The, uh, it, it is very unfortunate, but my, the emphasis of, of, or my emphasis and, and my metric is not so much timeliness, although, you know, I do want inquiries to be, to be conducted as expeditiously as possible. But my metric is ensuring that the inquiry makes findings that are based on law, uh, sorry, based on evidence and makes recommendations that derive from those findings.
And how is that metric formally reflected in a KPI? How do you measure that?
Well, um, I, I measure it, counsel. In the 20 years that, in which my office has been operating, findings have never been the subject of a successful chat, never yet been the subject of a successful challenge. The, um, by the time something comes to my office, it's usually because either other processes have failed or because, uh, the subject matter is very complex. Therefore, it is more important to me to make sure that, uh, the, an IGADF inquiry is, uh, complete and addresses the issues that it needs to address, uh, but also is, um, can, can be relied upon.
So, accepting that that's your metric, we might just look at that in the context of DSIR. If the operator can please turn to dot zero zero nine nine of that document. A- a- and I understand you to have sort of set out in some detail for the commissioners, your reasons why, um, timeframes for this particular function is problematic. But this is the document where you report to the minister about your performance in accordance with those metrics that you've identified. Can the operator please go to dot? No, this isn't that, no.
Uh, no, it is, it is, it is the document, but the legislation requires me to report on the operations of my office, counsel.
But you have taken it upon yourself in this report to talk about performance?
Uh, yes, I, I regard that as part of, of reporting on the operations.
So where is the gap between my proposition and your view?
The, uh, I, I, I just wanted to, um, to clarify, counsel, that this is not a report just about performance. It's a report about more than performance.
But certainly it captures performance?
Uh, it captures aspects of performance, yes.
Are there any other, other mechanisms by which you report to Parliament or the minister about your performance?
Uh, no, counsel.
Okay, so let, then let's go to the part of this annual report and DSIR that deals with performance. It's dot zero one zero zero and it goes across to the next page. If the operator could please expand the section under performance. So the metric that's used there is timeframes. And I understand the reasons you've given why timeframes are a problematic metric. But there's no other metric or key performance indicator set out there about how the work of that directorate ought to be measured?
Counsel, as I mentioned earlier, the, at this time, what we were trying to, uh, grapple with was some way of calculating in relation to each inquiry, how long the inquiry should take, what resources it needed, uh, and, and other factors based on the complexity of, the, the, the anticipated complexity of the inquiry. So when I talk there about desired timeframes, the desired timeframe, uh, will be different for each inquiry.
A- a- and, and I accept that and we might be at cross purposes. Uh, uh, I have well understood your evidence about the difficulties of timeframes as a metric of performance. My observation is that there is no other metric identified in the report of performance of this directorate, at least as it appears on the face.
No, counsel.
So we might jump forward to the most recent annual report. As at the date of the most recent annual report, were the new KPIs you've spoken about in place?
No, counsel.
Okay, so then if the operator could please go to exp dot zero zero one one dot triple zero one dot triple zero one and go then to dot zero zero two three. Again, this is a report on the performance of that directorate, or this is a report about that directorate. I might ask the operator to please go to dot zero zero two six. Uh, the next page, please, sorry. No, the previous page. And expand the paragraph under performance. Oh, both paragraphs, please. So again, I, I don't cavil with the evidence you've given about timeframes as a problematic metric. But I, I observe that there is no reference in those passages of your report about any other metric by which the performance of that directorate is measured. Would you accept that?
Yes, counsel.
And i- in terms of this reporting mechanism to Parliament, i- in your view, is that acceptable?
As I mentioned earlier, counsel, it's a report about the operations of my office. I address performance in, in that report and I, and I explain the challenges that my office has had in, in the, in the performance of, uh, my statutory role and functions. The, um, the, a- as I've explained, in both of the inquiry's directorates, measuring performance is, is, uh, uh, i- i- is a very hard thing to do.
Um, but, but I had understood you to say, and again, correct me if I'm wrong about that, is that you have identified at least for yourself some other metrics by which you measure the performance of your directorates? Is it, is that correct?
That's, that's correct, counsel.
And let's focus on the period of reporting, um, for this annual report. So the 2022 financial year, um, putting to one side timeframes. What metrics did you have as IGADF for the performance of this directorate? And putting to one side timeliness, what other metrics did you have?
Uh, counsel, the, uh, during this period, which was a, um, a period of some upheaval, both within that directorate and also, uh, within, within Australia because of the, uh, the pandemic, the, um, my focus was on making sure that the work of that directorate continued to the extent that it could, given the challenges that it faced. I, uh, my only, or the, I, I did not have a numerical metric. A- as I said earlier, the, the, the aim is to make sure that inquiries are conducted according to law, that they, and, and that they, their findings are, are evidence-based and that they're, uh, and that the inquiry report and its findings and any recommendations is a reliable document for, uh, the people who need to use it.
Um, a- and in terms of that metric and the question of accountability of first of all, this particular directorate, um, we should expect to find that in the 2023 to 2025 strategic report.
Sorry, you should expect to find-
The metric you've just identified, we should expect to find that in the strategic plan?
Well, the, the metric I've just identified, counsel, is, uh, uh, i- is, sorry, I'll just, um, think about, think about my answer. The, the metric that I have just identified is the metric that I apply. But it's the metric that I would, that I would expect should be applied in all cases. So it may not be stated in, in the 2023 to 2025 report as a metric. As I mentioned earlier, the 2023 to 2025 report sets out, uh, new KPIs for, for the conduct of the work of my office.
So metric you've just described may not be stated in the 2023 to 2025 strategic plan. Is it reduced to writing anywhere else in the standard operating procedures or manuals for your office?
No, no, counsel, it is, it is not. But it won't be e- explicit in the 2023 to 2025, uh, report. But it will certainly be implicit in the, sorry, I'm using the word report now myself. In the, it won't be explicit in the 2023 to 2025 strategic plan, but it will certainly be implicit, I hope, throughout that plan.
And we might return to this issue with the benefit of the document. Commissioners, I'm conscious of the time. I think we're due to take an adjournment at 10:30. I'm about to move on to a new topic. If it's convenient, we might perhaps take that adjournment now?
Certainly, that's fine. We'll adjourn for morning tea.
All rise. The Royal Commission into Defence and Veterans Suicide will now adjourn. The Royal Commission into Defence and Veterans Suicide is now resumed. Please be seated.
Thank you, Miss Longman.
Thank you, Commissioner Caldis. Mr Gaynor, we have now received the strategic plans for your office. Um, I just wanted to take you to a couple of parts of those to round out the examination about key performance indicators. Um, operator, could you please display igd dot zero zero two seven dot triple zero one dot zero two zero six? So this, Mr Gaynor, is your earlier strategic plan for the period 2020 to 2022. Um, can the operator please turn to dot zero two one two and expand that part of the page under the heading Strategic, Our Strategic Plan? Uh, no, sorry, operator, it's, it's the section under Our Strategic Plan at the bottom. Uh, so references made there, Mr Gaynor, to a strategic planning project undertaken by your office. Um, amongst the matters that were noted as part of the project was that there was no centralised way for your office to measure effectiveness and efficiency against its statutory functions. Is that a reflection of the evidence you've given earlier today about the difficulty of developing key performance indicators? And as I understood, um, your evidence, Mr Gaynor, that what key performance indicators you have been able to develop are reflected in your current strategic plan?
Uh, we have, we have promulgated new, in, uh, new performance indicators in our, in the current strategic plan, yes.
Um, and before I move to that, just noting the second dot point there under, um, with respect to the outcomes of the workshop. It noted that the operating model, as it then stood at least, was somewhat chaotic and not well-defined. You would accept that observation?
Well, that was the, um, the key finding, uh, one of the key findings from the workshop.
What was the date of that workshop?
Um, well, that commenced in, uh, in, in, uh, late 2018, according to the top of that paragraph, counsel.
But would it be fair to say, at least as at the date of this strategic plan, the state of your operating model was, as described, somewhat chaotic and not well-defined?
Well, th- that was, that was the finding, so yes, counsel.
I might then move to the 2023 to 2025 strategic plan. Operator, can you please display igd dot zero zero two seven dot triple, thank you. Um, and as I understood it, your evidence earlier today, Mr Gaynor, we should find in this document your key performance indicators?
Yes, counsel.
Uh, so if the operator can please turn to dot zero two two seven. Um, are, are these the key performance indicators?
No, no, counsel, um, we need to go further into the document. I, I think, I think under, um, one of the goals.
If the operator could please turn to dot zero two three three then. So these are the, um, key performance indicators to which you've referred?
No, counsel, they are, they are the, the first three goals. If we can move to, uh, the next page, please.
Yes, if you could move to the next page then, please.
And I, I apologise, I don't know the page number offhand, so we'll just have to work our way through.
Of course.
Uh, can we go back to that previous page? I did not have an opportunity.
If the operator could please turn to the preceding page?
That's, that's the one, that's-
This is the one?
No, can we go to the preceding page to that? There we go, so goal seven, improve timeliness. That sets out the, um, uh, the, the KPIs with respect to timeliness. And then there are more KPIs on the next page.
If the operator could please turn to the next page then?
And at the bottom there.
Improve aftercare, is that the section?
Improve aftercare, yes.
So am I right to understand that, that what is in goal seven about timeliness and goal nine about improving aftercare are the key performance indicators which currently exist for the functions performed by your office?
Well, uh, well, certainly with respect to timeframes, uh, all of those goals have goal measures against which achievement of the goals can, is intended to be measured.
And will we find any other key performance indicators in this document? For example, for the work performed by the DSIR?
So I think you'll find in the improved timeliness, there is a, a specific KPI for the work performed by DSIR.
Okay, so that's, but, but with the exception of those two goals, seven and nine, that- Okay, so that's, but with the exception of those two goals, seven and nine, that, that is where the key performance indicators are?
Those are, those are where the, the numerical ones are. At least, that, 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 that I recollect. There may, there may be others I don't believe there are, but of course, all of those goals have a goal statement, a goal strategy, and then goal measures.
But we will find any key performance indicators in this document, that we've just, the 2023 to 2025 strategic plan?
Yes, counsel, that, it's the strategic plan.
Now, I want to shift topics and turn to the question of your jurisdiction to conduct a death inquiry. If the operator can please display Section five of the IGADF Regulation 2016? And if you could expand, please, Section five and subsection A. So this section defines your jurisdiction to undertake a death inquiry, that's right, Mr. Gaynor?
Yes, counsel.
And your power to conduct such an inquiry is relevantly confined to cases where, first of all, the, sorry, where the death appears to have arisen out of or in the course of the member's service in the Defence Force?
Well, there are two criteria. It must be the death of a member of the Defence Force. And then if a member of the Defence Force has died and the death appears to have arisen out of or in the course of their service in the Defence Force, I have jurisdiction to inquire.
So there is a status criteria, and that is that the individual concerned be a member of the Defence Force, and then there is a service nexus criteria?
Yes, although the service nexus is, is, I think, more limited than just service nexus. It's got to be the, a nexus, the, the, there has to be a nexus between the relevant death and having, it's having arisen out of or in the course of their service.
Yes, and we might conveniently, I might conveniently use the shorthand service nexus to describe that provision of the Act you've just spoken to. So when I say service nexus, I will be talking about the criteria that the death appears to have arisen out of or in the course of the member's service in the Defence Force. That might just be shorthand we can use.
That, that's, that will be completely acceptable, counsel. My apologies, service nexus is usually a status test, but in other, in other contexts. But, but we can define it in this way for these purposes.
Certainly, thank you, Mr. Gaynor. Now, your office has provided the Royal Commission with material about death inquiries about a suspected suicide. And as I understand it, we've been provided with information of about 77 death inquiries that fall into that category?
Yes, counsel.
Now, our internal maths, but please correct me if I'm wrong about that, is that about 70%, that is 55 out of those 77 death inquiries about a suspected suicide, have not gone beyond the assessment phase? Does that sound about right to you?
I couldn't, I couldn't speak. As I, as I think I said in my evidence yesterday, the, often to find out the answer to that question in Section five A, it's, it's, it's necessary to conduct an assessment which is, which is essentially an inquiry. But, so I, I can't recall the distinction, you know, the breakdown between the assessments on the one hand and inquiries on the other.
And, and I'll come to that in a little bit of detail. But the figure that I've just put to you doesn't sound broadly, wildly inaccurate.
Could you please repeat the figure?
So, the, the calculations we've conducted is that 55 out of 77 of the death inquiries about a suspected suicide have not gone beyond the assessment phase? And in most cases, that was because there was no service nexus found?
I, I, I will, I will accept that for the purposes of, of your questions, counsel.
And those death inquiries, so it's about 70% of the death inquiries about a suspected suicide about which we have been provided with information, are ones that your office has not gone on to conduct a full inquiry in relation to?
The, the distinction between an assessment and an inquiry in suicide can, can often be hard to define. It is, so, the, so if an assessment into a death is conducted and ultimately arrives at that there is no jurisdiction to, to inquire, often that assessment will have, be tantamount to what would have happened in, in an inquiry.
And, and that is part of the issue that my questions are directed to, and that is the constraints imposed by Section five A of the IGADF Regulation and how those constraints are managed by your office. Lieutenant Colonel Spenderlove gave evidence earlier this week or the previous week that since the time he arrived in the Directorate in about March of 2022, there'd been a different process whereby all deaths by suspected suicide have a formal inquiry under written directions. Are you aware of that?
Sorry, I, can you, can you just repeat the?
Would it assist if I, if I took you to his evidence?
Yes, please.
If the operator could please display transcript 79-7683? So if you could read, please, Mr. Gaynor, the passage of Lieutenant Colonel Spenderlove's evidence from about line 15?
I've read that, counsel, sorry, the, what was the question, my apologies.
Well, no, so Lieutenant Colonel Spenderlove is there talking about the process that existed before he came to the Directorate, you would accept that account is correct?
Well, except I, I disagree that it was just before.
Okay, if I could ask the operator then to please remove that extract and go to the extract of the evidence commencing at line 26 to line 36?
Perhaps, would I, would it be possible for me to read the, read the whole page?
Of course, yes, if you'd like to read the whole page, that's fine, Mr. Gaynor, take your time. Operator, if you could please stop expanding, just to give Mr. Gaynor an opportunity to read the page in its entirety. Operator, if you could please remove the expanded text?
Could I read the, the last, could I read the page before and then, and then go to the page before, please?
Of course, operator, can you please turn to the preceding page?
Okay, could we go to the next page, please? I can't see the top of the page, oh, I just, yeah, great. Thank you, counsel.
So you'll see Lieutenant Colonel Spenderlove there describes an earlier process where there was a separate assessment phase to determine the service nexus question before proceeding to a comprehensive inquiry where that service nexus criteria was satisfied. So that's the earlier process. He then goes on to describe, and tell me if you disagree with that account of his evidence?
No, I, I agree with, with that account. But I, but as I said earlier, when he says before, I, 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 I I disagree with any interpretation that it was just before.
Okay, I'll give you an opportunity in a moment to say when you think the process was shifted. Lieutenant Colonel Spenderlove goes on to describe a latter process by which, in the case of all suspected suicides, there is a full inquiry. You'd accept that?
Yes.
And as you see from the bottom of the page, he gives evidence that he understands that it is your intent that all deaths by suspected suicide would follow the approach of having a formal inquiry underwritten directions?
Yes, counsel, and the reason he says, well, when, when Lieutenant Colonel Spenderlove refers to something having been largely superseded, it's, it's certainly the, the general rule.
And so, just in terms of the proposition of the point in time where the full inquiry approach superseded the assessment phase approach that's described by Lieutenant Colonel Spenderlove, can you tell the commissioners when that occurred?
My recollection is that it occurred from the start of 2020. It, it may have occurred earlier, but, but, but my recollection is it occurred from the start of 2020.
And what precipitated the change?
What precipitated a change was, touches on some of the evidence I gave yesterday, that I became aware that IGADF inquiry reports were were not just reports to the Chief of the Defence Force in accordance with the legislation, but certainly for other interested groups and most importantly, next of kin and families who had lost someone they loved, that the IGADF inquiry reports were an, an important thing for, for them because in many cases, they were the last or only official record of their, their loved one's circumstances and their loved one's death.
So is it the case, Mr. Gaynor, that as and from 2020, the full inquiry approach will be applied to all suspected suicides that are open death inquiries within your office?
Anything that was ongoing may not, may not fall into that category. There might, might still have been an assessment. But, but, but my process certainly for the last few years has been that there will be an inquiry into, into all suicides. The reason, another reason for that is, as I mentioned yesterday, that sometimes to answer the jurisdictional question, it's necessary to, you know, that, it's, it's necessary to conduct an inquiry.
And Lieutenant Colonel Spenderlove gave evidence that the full inquiry assessment process would be reflected in a new process map for his Directorate. I might just show you the existing one. If the operator could please display igd.007.002.001? And if the operator could please then turn to dot 0014? Just take an opportunity to look at that, Mr. Gaynor.
Yes, counsel.
So you'll see that reflects a quite linear process by which death inquiries are undertaken. And materially, it has an assessment phase compliance with which, and when I say compliance, I mean, as a result of the assessment, it being identified that the criteria in Section five are met, is a precondition to the inquiry phase proper commencing?
Yes, counsel, in relation to, generally in relation to inquiries into service deaths. But as I mentioned, in relation to suicide, the, the assessment of jurisdiction can, can sometimes require an, essentially an inquiry process to, to arrive at that. An assessment isn't, isn't distinct necessarily from an inquiry. Evidence is still gathered, witnesses can be interviewed as part of, as part of an assessment. But as, as I've said, my direction has been that in all cases of suicide, there is to be an inquiry.
So a nonlinear process be adopted by which the assessment and inquiry phase are superseded into one?
Are, are, are combined, yes.
And just in terms of the reflection of that direction, it doesn't appear in the process map, or sorry, the guideline as it currently stands, which is dated the 29th of November 2022. Are you aware of any documentation of that direction or guidance that post-dates your 2020 view?
I am not aware of any particular document. But certainly, the, for some years now, my office has produced an inquiry report in connection with suicides, whereas previously the office would produce a, a, almost an administrative document that, that assessed jurisdiction.
And, and Mr. Gaynor, I, I need to correct the proposition I've just put. If I can take the, if the operator can please go to dot 006 of the document and expand paragraph 14? That does include, at least in writing, a reflection that due to the multidimensional nature of causal factors commonly associated with death by suicide, a more formal inquiry will almost always be required?
Yes.
Now, if the operator can please go back to Section five of the IGADF Act. It will come as no surprise to you, Mr. Gaynor, that the idea that your office will conduct a full inquiry into every death by suicide is one that this Royal Commission would welcome. But it appears, at least on the face of Section five A as it currently stands, there is a live question as to your power to do so. Would you accept that?
Yes, counsel.
So to put it another way, taking the full inquiry approach to a suspected death by suicide may mean that you go through the full inquiry process without the jurisdictional threshold and Section five A for you to do so being reached?
Oh, I wouldn't say we do it without a jurisdictional threshold, counsel, because we rely very much on the word appears in Section five. As I was saying, counsel, we, we rely very much on, we rely very much on the word appears in Section five A.
But there may be a circumstance in which you complete a full inquiry and the conclusion of that full inquiry is that the service nexus in Section five A is not reached?
Yes, but at that moment, we will know that the death no longer appears to have arisen. arisen out of, we'll be able to say it didn't arise out of or in the course of service.
In terms of your current jurisdiction, do you have any view about how the legislation might be amended to expand your jurisdiction to enable a death inquiry with respect to suspected suicide to be completed in all cases?
Well, it would be a, it would need regulatory amendment, counsel, but I think that that is all that it would, or that is what it would require.
My question is, do you have a view about what form of words that regulatory amendment would take?
Government lawyers are taught never to try to interfere with the work of the Office of Legislative Drafting and Publishing, counsel. But certainly, if the, if the, it's something we always do anyway, so the, I think that it would be easy to insert a mandatory inquiry requirement in respect of ADF suicides.
And is that prospective regulatory amendment one you've raised with the Minister for Defence?
No, I have not raised this as a specific regulatory amendment because as I've said, I, my, I have proceeded on the basis that a suicide can appear to have arisen out of in the course of a member's service and requires inquiry on that basis.
So you don't see any benefit in further clarification being provided in the regulations to make it explicit that that is the case?
I think I can see benefit, counsel, in making the legislation clearer. It is my desire that other aspects of IGADF legislation can also be amended and that is one of the reasons why I am keen to have a review of the office.
But we went to the terms of reference document yesterday, at least as it presently stand, it doesn't, it doesn't make any specific reference to prospective legislative amendment to clarify or further enhance your statutory powers in relation to death inquiries about suspected suicides. That's correct?
There is no specific reference to that, but there's no specific reference to other reforms that, that I think could, would be very useful as well.
Do you intend to direct the individuals undertaking that review to specifically consider that question?
Well, I certainly intend to raise it with them. I don't want to give the impression that I'm directing their review.
What about extending your jurisdiction to inquire into the death of a former member? The data being analysed by the Royal Commission indicates that the two-year period after separation from defence is a risk period for suicide. Do you see any problems with expanding your jurisdiction to encompass deaths of former members up to two years after separation?
Counsel, that would be a matter for government. We have done one inquiry into the death of a former ADF member, and that was in circumstances where I was concerned that aspects of their service might have contributed to their death. And so in those circumstances, I requested the CDF give me a direction to inquire. My reason for telling you this is to indicate that I'm not opposed to that suggestion, but it would be for others to decide whether or not that was an appropriate expansion of my jurisdiction.
And accepting that it's ultimately a matter for Parliament to determine what your functions are, you've obviously occupied the office for a substantive period of time. Would you give the commissioners the benefit of your views, having occupied the office of the risks and prospective upsides of your, of that function being given to your office?
Well, the risks are resourcing risks, I suppose. You know, I would need more resources for an expansion in that way. The, the, I believe though, that there would be advantages in extending the jurisdiction with respect to suicides beyond service tenure.
Do you see any practical difficulties in your office being charged with that function?
No, I don't see any practical difficulties. My office essentially has the powers of a Royal Commission when it comes to death inquiries. Not all of the same features apply, but we can compel evidence from any person.
And in terms of those resourcing constraints you've spoken about, as I understood your evidence yesterday, people capability can be a challenge, but your budget proposals have never been knocked back.
That's correct.
And to take, for example, the recent backlog in terms of completing death inquiries, you've obviously had the funding to engage an external law firm to assist you with that task.
That's correct.
So in that sense, as matters presently stand, you may be able to avail yourself of money that would enable you to expand the pool of people who could undertake that function?
Yes, counsel. And the other resource issue, which is not insuperable, would be, as I mentioned, that law firm shouldn't be regarded as doing these things on its own. They are operating with the assistance and the strategic direction of someone who is one of my most experienced inquiry officials. But as I said, that's not insuperable. Solutions could be found.
And just turning to the question of your staff, I might just ask the operator to please display section 1110, capital O, of the Defence Act. And it's 1110, capital O, please, operator. It's on page 201 of the Act. And if you could just expand that section. This is the provision that guides your capacity to retain staff?
Yes, counsel.
And materially, it has two limbs. One, you have the capacity to contract, to engage external assistance, and that's reflected in subsections two and three. That's a fair characterisation?
Yes, counsel.
But in terms of your staff, it's materially confined to members of the Defence Force that the CDF makes available to you. That's the first pool of people resources you have?
Yes, counsel.
And the second aspect of it is APS employees in effect, but made available for the purposes by the Secretary of the Department? And am I right to understand that's a reference to the Department of Defence?
Yes.
In terms of the resourcing constraints that you've given evidence about today and accepting what you say about it ultimately being a matter for the Parliament, do you have any views about what amendments might be made to this provision to address the resource challenges you've experienced?
Well, as I mentioned yesterday, counsel, my desire into the future would be that the Office of the IGADF be an entity. And therefore, instead of relying on staff made available by the Chief of the Defence Force or the Secretary, that it would have its own staff. I'm not suggesting that that would exclude the presence in my office of Australian Defence Force, people who are reserve members of the Australian Defence Force or even currently serving members of the Australian Defence Force, but I envisage there being part of a future Office of the IGADF, similar to the way that members of the Defence Force are part of the Australian Signals Directorate, which is a separate entity.
So you see there being a benefit to you having greater discretion in terms of obtaining staffing resources?
I, yes, I see the, I see there are many benefits in entity status, and one of those includes staff.
Now, just coming back to death inquiries with respect to suspected suicide, I recollect, but correct me if I'm wrong about this, you gave evidence yesterday about trend analysis with respect to the death inquiries that have come out of the auspices of your office? That's right, I've understood that correctly?
Yes, yes, counsel, I did give evidence on that topic yesterday afternoon.
And I understood you to say that that analysis is in the form of what's been called SIM 2204 or Assurance Check 2204? Have I understood that correctly?
I don't, I don't think that I referred to a specific document, but the Director of Select Strategic Issues Management on, in her evidence earlier this week, mentioned that it is the role of her organisation within Australian Defence Force Headquarters to conduct longitudinal analysis of IGADF inquiry reports.
So to the extent to which there has been a longitudinal analysis undertaken, that's been undertaken by ADF HQ?
Yes, yes, counsel.
And I might just ask the operator to please display that document. It's df dot one zero six three dot triple zero one dot zero zero two three. So this is the covering document, which is a decision brief for the CDF in relation to that report. Have you seen this document before?
I don't recall seeing the covering document. I have, if it covers the report that I think it does, I have seen the report.
And we might then turn to the report. It's at dot zero zero two seven of that document, please, operator. And I take it you're familiar with this document then, Mr Gaynor?
I have seen this document, counsel, yes.
It was, I suggested, non-technical analysis to identify amongst other matters any trends and themes emerging from death inquiry reports from your office with respect to suicide?
Yes, counsel, I think the emphasis is on non-technical, but...
And can I just ask, has your office ever done any such type of analysis?
As I mentioned yesterday, counsel, we did at the beginning of 2020, look at the predominant themes and of suicides as part of information that my office provided to the Australian Institute of Health and Welfare.
Okay, so that's, so internally, you've done some analysis to provide information to the AIHW in 2020, but putting that to one side, you haven't done any analysis of themes and trends?
No, no, we have not, although as I mentioned yesterday, I see all of the suicide reports and therefore am able to keep an eye on the themes.
And one of the recommendations coming out of this particular report was that there be created a common data, a dataset. And I might just see if I can take you to the particular recommendation. It's at page zero zero three nine, please, operator. And if you could please expand subparaphrase F. So you'll see there's, there is a recommendation for the creation of a common dataset that your office would be requested to specifically address in future reports. Are you aware of that recommendation?
I was aware that the report assessed that some of that information was sometimes hard to find in our inquiry reports. I think that it would be unlikely that that information, if it was relevant to a death, would not appear in any of our inquiry reports. But certainly since this report, we have, we have been standardising the production of information in our reports.
I just want to focus particularly on the proposition that there be a common dataset created. Have you received any requests from CDF in relation to the creation of that common dataset?
I have not received a request from CDF. I, and I have not been informed if my office has received such a request.
And, I mean, you, just in terms of your engagement with CDF, I mean, I've taken you to a number of your briefing notes. Can you give the commissioners an overview of your level of engagement with CDF beyond those briefing notes?
The briefing notes support a monthly meeting that I have with the CDF.
And has the issue to your recollection of a common dataset in relation to death inquiry reports pertaining to suicide been raised?
I do not recall it's being raised.
But in terms of process, given that you, your engagement with CDF, if there was a request for a common dataset to be created, you would expect that that request would come from CDF to you rather than someone else within your office?
That would be my expectation.
Now, can I just take you back to the 2022 annual report? Operator, can you please display document number exp dot zero zero one one dot triple zero one dot triple zero one? And please turn to dot zero zero two six. I might ask you just to start, please, operator, with the previous page. So there is there in your most recent annual report, some reporting with respect to the assistance provided by your office to the interim National Commissioner for Defence and Veteran Suicide Prevention. At the bottom part of the page, there is discussion about the commissioner's comments about suicide analysis. If the operator could please then turn to the next page and expand that part of the page up to the heading Performance? Just take an opportunity to read that, Mr Gaynor.
Yes, so that's the analysis I referred to before, counsel, when I was mentioning about the work we had done for the AIHW, which fed into the work of the interim National Commissioner.
So take, for example, the second dot point there about family and relationship breakdowns being an emerging and recurring theme among contributing factors. That is an internal analysis your office has done to feed into the work of the AIHW?
Yes, yes, counsel, and that is, that is consistent with my, my own assessment of themes arising from IGADF inquiry reports into suicide.
And is there any existing, or do you think that there is any utility in establishing a regular trend analysis by your office with respect to trend analysis by your office with respect to issues arising in death inquiry reports that pertain to suicide?
Well, it's, it's a question. I'm open to the suggestion, counsel, but as I've mentioned previously, the, the analysis of findings and, and recommendations in my, my reports is already conducted at Australian Defence Force Headquarters. I would, I guess, I would want to make sure that, that we weren't duplicating the same work.
So would it be right to understand that, from your perspective, the lead entity in terms of that trend, that that trend analysis is Defence and particular ADF HQ rather than your office?
Yes.
And have you taken any steps to satisfy yourself that ADF HQ is in fact undertaking that trend analysis?
Well, we have, we have Ms. Hilda's report. And, and certainly, I, I, I know that a lot of work is being done in ADF HQ to do with, to do with suicide, but I have not taken steps myself to, formal steps, to confirm that that is the case.
Commissioners, I'm about to move on to another topic. Would this be an appropriate opportunity for you to ask questions about this specific subject?
Yes, I think that'd be good. Thank you. Commissioner Brown?
Thank you. Mr. Gaynor, if I can go back to some of your testimony from yesterday, and you're talking about wanting to take IGADF to the next level of independence. And you spoke about having independent entity status as one indicator of a next level of independence. And I think you talked about the selection of staff as being another. Are there other things that you have in mind to achieve that next level of independence?
Those are the two principal things, Commissioner. People get, sorry, I'll withdraw that. The, the, I, I see IGADF being a separate entity and also changing the complexion of the IGADF workforce to be important indicator of greater independence. The IGADF performs an oversight role, and my view is that oversight is best performed by people with knowledge and, and experience of the profession being overseen. And certainly that happens in the legal profession, it happens in the judiciary, it happens in the medical profession as well, that the, the people engaged in, in oversight of those professions have experience in, in the profession. So I'm not suggesting that independence necessarily connotes divorce from having the members of the Defence Force as part of the IGADF workforce. But certainly, entity status as, as well as IGADF staff as opposed to Defence staff are going to be important steps towards independence.
Can I ask you then about, you set out for us the criteria around the IGADF appointment, that it needs to be someone who either has no military background but has knowledge and experience, or that if they have a military background, they need to have no further military aspirations? I've kind of...
No future career aspirations in the Defence Force?
Thank you.
Or in, or in Defence?
But I guess I, and the intent is clear there, but I'm just a little bit kind of puzzled, perplexed, I guess, how someone could have a lengthy military career, resign and take up the role of IGADF. And this, please, is not an attack on you as an individual, but conceptually, if you're in the military one day and have been for 20, 30 years, and then the next day you take up the position as the independent overseer. I guess, you know, we've heard so much during this inquiry about the challenge for people to transition from their military identity. That sense of loyalty to colleagues, loyalty to the organisation, that sense of teamwork, et cetera. It, it doesn't leave you, and certainly doesn't leave you overnight, which of course then means that there's a potential for someone who's come from that background enters into the role of IGADF to have that potential unconscious bias. And you said you have training and unconscious bias. I guess what I want to understand is how you actually monitor that in, in your staff and in yourself?
So, and thank you for the question, counsel, oh, sorry, Dr. Brown. The, so I suppose this gets back to, and I know you said you did not want to make this about me as an individual, but it does get back to individual, individual features about me. First of all, I, although I was a member of the Defence Force, I was always a specialist member of the Defence Force. I was a, I was a lawyer, I was a fully formed adult before I joined the Defence Force. I was 25 years old and, you know, I had, my time in the Defence Force was essentially spent as, as an in-house lawyer for the Defence Force. So I don't have the same level of, if you like, close connection in the same way that, that people who have, who have joined at the age of 17 and have known nothing else until their retirement.
Can I perhaps just stop you there, though? Because I really don't want to make this about you. One of the issues we are, have been examining is the perception of independence. And the perception of independence, you know, starts, I guess, at the top. So, and, you know, one day you will move out of this position and someone else will come. The criteria that are set, I mean, I don't know how you'd set them any other way necessarily, but I, I am troubled as to how, how we can systematically ensure as best as possible that, that unconscious bias, which almost inherently has to be there, how you can best protect against that?
Well, Dr. Brown, there is a balance in, in the selection of an inspector general or an oversight, the head of an oversight body. And you either choose someone who's, who knows nothing of the organisation and is so independent that they can be captured by the organisation because they simply don't know what, what questions to ask, don't know where to look. Or you can choose someone who, who has that knowledge and experience of, and knows exactly how to go about examining the Defence Force and then rely on their, their, their training, their professionalism to, to, to ensure that they don't, that they look for and, and address issues of unconscious bias.
Okay, I'll, I'll move on. You said that you had been told that some of the families had not been advised of the outcome, the final outcomes
Yes.
of inquiry reports, and you were appalled when you were told. But I was surprised that you said you didn't actually ask how the acting director became aware of those lapses.
The acting director told me in a, in a meeting. And as I think I mentioned in my update to Angus Campbell, the, the acting director said, well, we, we haven't been because they would have seen the, the draft report. So I don't know how the acting director became aware, but...
You didn't ask? Like, I, I just struggled to think why that wouldn't have been almost an automatic question?
Well, because the, because part of, well, I didn't really need to ask, he's the acting director. I assumed he was aware and just had not, had not informed me. The, the, you know, he, he would have, well, he, he, he must have known. And indeed, when he, when he told me about it, it was, it was simply, oh, we're not doing this because they've already seen the, the draft report.
But did you say to him, how long have you known this?
No, I did not. I did say, how long has this been going on? And, and how many people are affected? And he was unable to, to tell me. Like I said, it wasn't, it wasn't a specific matter that he raised with me. It was something that he mentioned to me as part of my, his, my monthly meeting with him. And, and then it was a case of examining the extent. Now, that meeting happened in advance of my meeting with, my monthly meeting with Angus Campbell. And so at the time that I provided him that update, I was unable to, I did not myself know the extent.
I mean, I have to say, I am surprised because in other parts of your testimony, you talked on a couple of occasions about how you rely on your directors. That's kind of your form of assurance. You rely on them to ensure that the correspondence is going out, that people are communicated with, et cetera. But then, very clear example of an issue, and it doesn't appear as though you have necessarily really interrogated that lapse.
And Commissioner, the, the reason that I was oblivious to this was because there had been other family debriefs in respect of inquiry reports into ADF deaths that did not arise out of suicide. So I was aware that there were members of the Directorate of Select Incident Review who were conducting family debriefs. What I did not know was that because the, the, either the former director or the acting director had decided that families had already seen a copy of the draft report, that there was no need to arrange a separate debrief for them.
I mean, I, I appreciate how it arose, but I guess my point is, if you're relying on your directors to be your assurance mechanism, and there's a clear breach in that assurance mechanism, then I guess I perhaps may have expected that you would have interrogated that more extensively than you appear to have conveyed to us. I'll move on. In terms of the question of that longitudinal analysis of suicides, and I appreciate you said that you see that as a function that sits within ADF Headquarters, do you, do you see that such an analysis could actually inform your future inquiries? Is there potential benefit in that?
Yes, yes, Commissioner.
So, so again, the obvious question there is, should it be them or should it be your, or should it be both, perhaps periodically?
Or, or, or should?
Joint?
Well...
Or joint?
Or, or joint, or, or, you know, a sharing of information?
Yes, well, we, we hope the information's shared, but I think counsel just took us at the end to the fact that there's a recommendation about data to be, they would like to see collected by IGADF, but you haven't received the correspondence?
I am unaware.
To the best of your awareness?
To, to the best of my awareness, and awareness, Commissioner, we have not.
Which again, doesn't, I think, fill us, sitting here today, with a great sense of assurance that the system's working in a timely fashion to get the best outcome from, you know, doing such a review. Can I, I move on then to the issue of relationship breakdown? We, we, counsel talked about the nexus to service. I'm curious to understand how you might determine whether a family breakdown, a relationship breakdown, actually does have a nexus to service? You talked about looking at their service history, their posting history. But what is it about their service history? What is it about their posting history or any other factors that would actually make you think that the service, that service actually had a contributing factor to relationship breakdown, which may then have been a contributing factor to a death?
So the features of, I mean, the, the separation and divorce rate in the Defence Force is higher than the, the rest of the population. There are many contributing factors to that. Operational deployments, posting, the posting cycle, posting turbulence. I'm not, I, I, there are good, there are, there are positives for the Defence Force's operational capability in posting cycles. Because when people have to move and join new teams, they become very effective at quickly establishing working relationships. And that means if they are deployed overseas as part of, with a group of people with whom they've never worked before, then they are, then they are practised and, and understand how quickly to, to work well together as a team with a group of people that they've never, with whom they've never worked before. But certainly, the impact on families is, you know, is significant in terms of relationships and also the schooling of children and, and, and other aspects of family life. So, so when, when I said we look at those, those features, the, what I'm, what I'm interested in is how often has this person deployed? You know, and if, if the relationship breakdown has affected, is one of the contributing factors to their death, then...
Just if I stop you there, so what would you be looking for? Two deployments over two years, five deployments over?
Well...
A more extended period, like, and I know you're going to be able to say it's not precise, but that, I guess, is my point, is how, how are people out there to understand what you're looking at? And, and I guess the reason being is, is that currently, the reports are saying, that aggregate report, for example, the longitudinal analysis, says relationship breakdowns are one of the two more common features that you're finding. And so it's easy to then say, well, the suicides aren't due to a connection to service, they're due to a relationship breakdown. But for families, the impact of having the contribution of a service career, you know, the acknowledgement that a service career contributed to a relationship breakdown, which may have been associated with the death, is very significant, I would put to you. As opposed to something that says, no connection to service found, or no nexus to service?
Yes, I, I would agree with what you've said, Commissioner.
So, so coming back, sorry if I could just...
No, you're all right.
So coming back then, having some way of understanding how you might be looking at that issue of the relationship between service and relationship breakdown actually is really important?
Yes, Commissioner, and, and that's one of the reasons why in, as I've mentioned, in, in January 2020, I realised that our level of engagement with families I realised that our level of engagement with families of, to see, of families who had lost a, a loved one needed to improve, and we needed to get more information from them, which could inform our findings.
I'll move on. In terms of performance measures, how do you know if you're doing a good job?
So, Commissioner, a lot of my performance measures are external. The, there has never been a finding in an IGADF inquiry into the death of an ADF member which has not been accepted by a coroner. The, every person who is engaged, or not engaged, is, is part of an IGADF inquiry, at the conclusion of the inquiry is informed that the, every person who's affected is informed that if they have difficulties or concerns about the inquiry or the inquiry process, they can go to the Defence Force Ombudsman, who is the, who reviews the work that I do. And, and my office has never been the subject of a finding of administrative defect or, or other adverse finding by the, by the Defence Force Ombudsman. The other way that I know that I'm being effective is, as I mentioned yesterday, there is quality assurance in terms of the quality of the findings that we make, because there is always peer review, legal input, and, and supervisor review, and sometimes review by me as well.
I mean, just, council put up the values that you have in your strategic plan, I think it is, one of which was, I'm not sure it was a value or an aim, but confidence. Do you measure the confidence that people have in the IGADF? And I'm thinking here particularly in relation to inquiries about suicide deaths?
Yes, Commissioner, we have attempted to, to measure confidence. And as part of the post-engagement team, we are going to be doing that on a consistent basis to, to communicate with, with people who've been involved in either a complainant or a respondent in our military justice inquiry work. And the next of kin, where, where it's suitable to, to contact them. Some of them don't want to be, to be contacted. But the aim is to find out about their experiences of working with IGADF and then to use that feedback to improve what we do. We, we do try continuously to improve what we do. And if you looked at what we did seven and a half, seven and a half, seven, if you compare what we did seven and a half years ago to now, you'd find a marked change. And, and, and I hope a change for the better.
And, and just on that point, in terms of the work you've done to look at accountability measures, have you ever engaged with families or service members about what they might like to see?
Well, we, we engage, or we, we talk to, to families.
But I'm talking specifically in that exercise to think through accountability measures.
Yeah, so this, this year, as part of the, the strategic plan, one of our goals is improved outreach. And so staff from my office, including me, have been attending the sessions that the Defence Member and Family Support Branch runs.
But that, with all due respect, that's, that's a different type of engagement. I'm talking specifically about a concept of, you know, potentially a co-design of, of some accountability measures that the community, who you have acknowledged is very important, that they might actually want to see.
Yes, and I see that as being part of the, one of the products of the post-engagement team. Because we will be consulting with people who've been part of the process, and one of the aims is, all right, tell us how we can do it better.
Two last questions. You, you report to the Minister for Defence and the Parliament?
That's, that's correct. I, I, I provide a report to the Minister for Defence for tabling in Parliament.
And so the Minister for Defence personnel is not specifically briefed by you? Even though you're primarily dealing with defence personnel?
Well, I mean, it depends on the, on the issue, Commissioner. Sometimes I will provide briefs to the Minister for Defence Personnel if, if the Minister for Defence Personnel wants, wants, wants information about an issue or someone has written to him, and, and I can provide information to assist in a response.
So could I ask how many briefings to the Minister for Defence Personnel you would have done in the last two years?
I, in the last two, there's been a change of government in the last two years. I have, I have not met personally with the Minister for Defence Personnel, but I have provided information to his office. And before then, I have had several meetings with previous Ministers for Defence Personnel.
Thank you, Mr. Gannon.
Thank you, Commissioner Douglas.
Thanks, Mr. Gannon. A few evidence. I want to return to this question of independence and run past you a couple of other models we've seen in our inquiries. One which is on, is currently before the New Zealand Parliament is an Inspector General of Defence, I think with probably a wider remit than yours, which is essentially on military justice. But where the proposal is that the Inspector General not have had a previous contact with the Defence Force. Are you familiar with that bill?
I, I am very generally familiar, Judge. I'm not, I, I can't claim specific knowledge. I haven't, I haven't read the, the bill, for example, but I'm aware of the.
It's been amended in the Parliament recently, I think.
I, I've been, I'm aware of the, the Operation Burnham inquiry and its recommendations. Or the establishment of an, of an IG.
The proposal came out of that, we understand, and may perhaps have been driven by that. The other possible model we've seen in the United States, which is a body which are much, which has a much broader remit than yours, which is really over the whole of the Defence Force and not limited to military justice, which yours is essentially that the requirement of their legislation is that no member of the Armed Forces, active or reserve, shall be appointed Inspector General of the Department of Defence. But we gather there may be a practice of appointing people who have been members and are now retired. And I've seen an opinion from their General Counsel of the Department of Defence that a retired officer not on active duty is not a member. And we understand that there may be a convention that a retired officer who's been retired for a number of years is appointed the role commonly. Do you have any view on that as a model?
The, my, my understanding is the Inspector General of the United States Department of Defence has uniformed staff in, in their office.
Yes.
The, the problem that I see is that one of the advantages that my previous service gives me is to know when I'm being told something that isn't, that isn't right. The, the, the problem of, of having, and, and this, of course, was, was part of Justice, you know, one of Justice Burchett's models, you know, have someone with, with no background but supported by a staff that did. The problem I see with that model is that if, if I had had no background when I took on my role, then I would have spent the last, or at least the first five years, learning about defence and learning about the Defence Force. I hope, I hope, I hope that no one would ever have sought to, to mislead me, but I would not have been able to tell if I was being misled. What I see is the advantages of my background are that no one has ever tried. So to comment on the two models, Judge, that you've, you've mentioned, the, the, I, I see the, the, you know, I, I, I see the advantage of, of the current IGADF model over those two as being that the IGADF must be someone who meets those qualifications laid out in the Defence Act and therefore has a knowledge and awareness of, of the organisation. And not just a passing knowledge and awareness, but a, but a, but a knowledge and awareness of some detail.
And Section 110 F requires the appointee to have knowledge and experience in relation to military justice, which is your particular remit at present.
Yes, although, of course, subject to a ministry or Chief of Defence Force direction, I can look at any matter affecting the Defence Force.
Yes. So your preference is that there be somebody with significant knowledge coming into the position?
I, I think that it is a, I, I think that it's a multiplier in terms of the effectiveness of the individual in the position. And I think that having someone without knowledge, supported by, having to rely on the knowledge of people who are still in the system and can return to the system, has flaws. It's, it's the theory of, have you heard of the revolving door as part of regulatory theory? And that is, there have been studies that have shown that the most effective regulators are people who have industry experience but have no, but, but have no expectation or, or who simply cannot re-enter that industry. They are the people who know the industry and they make very effective regulators. That effectiveness diminishes if the, if the regulator is someone who can go through the revolving door and back into the industry again.
I see. One potential advantage of the American model may be that the person appointed does have the background knowledge, but has had at least some significant gap between active involvement with the current personalities and appointment.
That, that's, that's certainly, that could be an advantage. It will depend upon how, how long ago their experience was. All defence organisations are very fast-moving environments. The, the Defence Force has changed considerably in the time that I have been out of the Defence Force. It's only because of my, my ongoing connection not to the Defence Force, but to knowledge of defence that, that I've been able to remain current, even, you know, after seven years of no longer being in, in the, being in the Army.
On one further point, can you tell me how your budget is fixed in practice? Do you put forward something to the Defence Department or?
So I am, I'm given an allocation usually based on what I've spent in the past. But the nature of a lot of my work is that it is non-discretionary. I don't, I certainly don't waste taxpayers' money. I regard it all as taxpayers' money. But, but some of the work that we do is expensive. And if I need more money, then it's a matter of, we, we usually spend the money and, and then we are, then defence increases my allocation.
Do you deal if there's a need for more?
So, so the, I deal with the Office of the Associate Secretary in the Department of Defence, so it's.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gannon. Just correct me if I'm wrong, I just need to clarify a couple of issues. Am I correct to say that you've said that you've never had a budget request refused in your tenure?
That's correct.
And neither has your predecessor, that you're aware of?
That, that I'm aware of. Certainly while I was his deputy, we never had a, a budget request refused.
Thank you. And that you've had no concerns during your tenure about your independence and your ability to exercise that independence?
No Chief of the Defence Force, in my time, and my predecessor used to say the same thing, has ever sought to interfere with or impinge on the IGADF's independence.
Thank you. Mr. Gannon, yesterday you gave evidence, and I'm, I'm not criticising you in any way, but I think you may have misspoken, and it's an, an area that I think we need to clarify for the record. You've mentioned in relation to quality assurance that no one in the IG makes a decision on their own. But I just need to bring to your attention the evidence of Mr. Schnaschel from the redress of grievance area. He did give evidence that that is not the case in his batch. Delegates did make a decision and it left the building without anybody seeing it, but they had the option of discussing issues with him on an exceptional basis.
Sorry, sorry, Commissioner, can you just repeat what Mr. Schnaschel said?
Mr. Schnaschel, he was specifically asked in relation to quality assurance. And his view was that, he was certainly busy, he didn't have the time or the, he wasn't in a position to review everything that left his office. The delegates made the decision. I asked him if a person made a decision, did anybody else check it before it left the building? And his answer was no.
Right.
Anyway, I just wanted to correct the record on that. I'll move on. You stated you felt that it was important that your staff have a military background, and I can understand that. You said it was so they can understand the nature of the matters they are inquiring into. I know council assisting took you through some other possibilities of including people who have expertise in psychology and perhaps related areas and some other skill sets. But there's a couple that I want to mention, and I just want to get your views as to whether they would, these particular skills perhaps would precede or be more important than the military background in areas such as knowledge or experience in coronial matters, toxicology, postmortems, forensic expertise, crime scene evidence, contemporary practices and investigations, and perhaps most importantly, experience in dealing appropriately with victims of violent or other crimes or have been traumatised in some way. I mean, would you value those skills? How would they sit with the military experience?
Well, I'm not suggesting that military experience is all that's needed, Commissioner. And in fact, my, I, I do have staff in my office with policing backgrounds, with, with expertise in dealing with, with victims of sexual offences. We, I have at least two former coroners on, as, well, three, three people with coronial experience who are also part of my office. They, they are reservists, but they are, well, two reservists and one contractor. But we certainly do benefit from, from their experience.
Are they actually coroners or staff who support the coroner?
All three are or were coroners.
In various states and territories, I gather?
Yes.
Thank you. Just regarding the issue that's been covered, and I won't go into great lengths, but the discovery that some families were not informed of the outcome of inquiries into their loved one's death, and I think you stated earlier, and Commissioner Brown asked you that, you said it was that you were absolutely appalled, which is understandable. You'd agree it's a significant failure?
Oh, I, I, I take full responsibility for it, Commissioner.
And you agree that it let families down?
Yes, that, that for me is the, is, is the most upsetting part.
Were there any consequences for those who handled those matters and didn't see it through to inform the families?
Yes, but Commissioner, the, I'm dealing with a particular, with a directorate that is under stress. And, and so the, the consequences that, that ultimately, my deputy and I decided to, to, to. my deputy and I decided to take were were on the gentler side of than certainly I felt like taking at first.
Without going into any individuals, I don't wish to do that, but what sort of consequences?
Commissioner?
On the gentler side or otherwise?
Yeah, the consequences were to bring home to them the people involved, the damage that they had caused to, and I'm talking here about, you know, damage to, well, not damage, but distress to families and to make, to bring them to realise, essentially to counsel them about what had occurred. As I've mentioned, it's a directorate without a director at present. It's been through through a significant period of stress. I did not want to compromise its effectiveness any more by more drastic measures.
So they were counseled, essentially?
Essentially, yes.
Were there any consequences for yourself? This happened on your watch?
Well, the, the, the consequences for me, Commissioner, are that, you know, I am embarrassed. I'm publicly embarrassed here. The, and as I said, I do take full responsibility for what's occurred. And we have worked to remediate it as quickly as possible. All of the affected families have now been contacted and offered, or are in the process of being offered, an opportunity to read an unredacted copy of the report and to receive a redacted copy of the report.
I appreciate that, thank you. Are you familiar with the case of Private Poet?
Yes, I am.
You're aware it went through a coronial process?
Yes, Commissioner.
And you're aware there was a book written which outlined the grievances of the family?
Yes, Commissioner.
I don't propose to go into them, but was there any self-reflection or lessons learnt, exercise after that to see if it could have been handled differently or better? Is there any recognition that perhaps it could have been done differently and better?
Commissioner, I try to learn from all criticism of me.
I'm really interested in this case, not in all cases.
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not, but certainly the Dr. Poet's reflections are something that I have considered. You know, they have informed the engagement that I have with people who are part of, or not that I have, but they have informed engagement with the people who are part of IGADF inquiries. We are, we do our best to give far more thorough explanations of the reasons we have made certain findings.
Thank you. Earlier talked about complexity matrices that you were looking up to help you establish things. It just seems to me the investigative space is one that's a rapidly evolving environment and there's a lot of work, research, publications going on about all sorts of issues. IA, DNA, et cetera, et cetera. Is there any intermittent or systemic way that the IG and the ADF look at what's happening in this space to learn from what others are doing?
Yes, yes, Commissioner. We do it both internationally and we also do it domestically.
Who do you talk to?
So internationally, there is an international conference of Ombudsmen's Institutions of Armed and Security Forces. And I attend that conference and others from my office sometimes attend that conference. And in those circumstances, we learn what other organisations with a similar role are doing internationally. In Australia, we participate in the Asia-Pacific Coroners Conference. And that's probably the principal conference in terms of investigative work that we do. But we are always open to learning new ways of doing business. So for example, a few months ago, the Director of Enquiries and Investigations and I attended a presentation about making people feel better about adverse administrative decisions. And we've taken one of the key learnings from that away. And that is that we now have a personal engagement whenever people who are affected by an IGADF inquiry are advised of the outcomes of that inquiry.
Sorry, taking that a step further. Commissioner Douglas asked you a bit earlier about your views about other models. You weren't entirely aware of the New Zealand proposals. Are you aware of the Arbor Report and the Canadian situation in relation to Inspector General-type investigations?
No, I'm not, Commissioner.
Are you aware of any of the trends in the US in relation to their view about how that's working? Their model?
About how, whose model is working?
The US model?
The US model? No, Commissioner, I'm not. The inspectors general, the United States inspectors general who attend the conference I mentioned are, the United States has a variety of different inspectors, types of inspectors general. The US Department of Defence Inspector General is actually...
Well aware of the system, yeah.
Yes, very well.
I'm interested in what you have to say about the US Inspector General.
So many of the US inspectors general are actually embedded in the organisations which they oversee and are a part of those organisations. So, and that is of course entirely different to the IGADF situation.
They have a much broader remit. It's almost to have some of the functions of the Auditor General and other departments in our system. But, okay, thank you for that. Do you have a view about whether the appointment to the position of Inspector General should be time-limited, such as Directors of Public Prosecutions and other positions where they limit them to one term of seven years? Or can it be a job for life?
I don't think it's, it will be a short life if it was a job for life. The, Commissioner, the, I, I'm, I don't have a particular view. I have been reappointed. I don't anticipate a further appointment and would not seek it.
Thank you, Ms. Longmottam.
Thank you, Commissioner Caudes. I might shift then, Mr. Gainor, to your inquiry and investigation function, particularly under Section 1110, capital C, 1A of the Defence Act. Might just ask if the operator could please display that provision? Now, could you please, Mr. Gainor, give the commissioners an overview of what you see the purpose of this function as being?
So I described yesterday the four components of the military justice system. Well, I described the four components of military justice. The military justice system is the arrangements that the Defence Force has in place in relation to those four components of military justice. The role of my office, as expressed in that paragraph, is to inquire or to investigate. Now, they are, those verbs, inquire and investigate, are almost terms of art in the defence context. Inquire refers to administrative inquiries and investigation refers to investigations under the Defence Force Discipline Act.
And, Mr. Gainor, would you accept that as part of the exercise of that function, you are to expose and examine deficiencies in the military justice system?
Yes, yes, counsel.
And when you're exercising that function, you will look to the cause of any deficiencies in the military justice system?
We will, we will examine the deficiencies and try to identify causes, yes.
And that identification of causes is really founded in the objects of this part of the act? And in particular, I might just ask if the operator could please display Section 1110, capital A, subsection B? So you would accept that in the exercise of this inquiry and investigative function, you're not just looking to identify where, for example, a deficiency in the military justice system exists? You can also, and in fact, the statute really calls upon you to look at the causes for that?
Yes.
And those causes might be individual, but they could also be systemic?
Yes.
Now, just focusing on the way in which you perform this part of your function. So putting to one side requests from CDF or the Minister of Defence, which can be broader in their scope. As I understand it, there are really two ways in which you can come to exercise inquiry or investigative function. One is when you get a referral from an individual?
Yes.
And the other is when you determine to do what's called an own-initiative inquiry?
Well, all of the inquiries that fit into those two categories are essentially own-initiative inquiries because I decide, I make the decision whether or not to inquire. That's why they are different from minister or Chief of Defence Force-directed inquiries.
Okay, well, let's just look at that then in the particular context of the IGADF regulations. And correct me if I'm wrong about this. I might just ask if the operator could please display Section 12 of the IGADF regulations? And you'll see there, it identifies in relation to your inquiry and investigative function, in effect, three mechanisms by which that might be enlivened. One is of your own initiative, that's correct?
Yes.
The other is at the request of an individual?
Yes.
And then you've got the directed powers or the direction to undertake an inquiry?
Yes.
So I just want to focus for a moment about the exercise of your inquiry function at the request of an individual. When you determine to exercise that function, the scope of the power can extend to looking at, for example, matters of culture that might have been a causal factor in any deficiencies in the military justice system. You would accept that?
To an extent, yes.
Now, I just want to take you to some evidence that was given by Group Captain Wallace. Operator, could you please display transcript 82-8025? And just turn to please page 8205 of that transcript? And if you could please expand from about line 23 with the question "Okay" through to the end of the page? And just for context, Mr. Gainor, I can take you to broader passages of the transcript that will assist. But I was there asking Group Captain Wallace some questions about the terms of inquiry for an inquiry undertaken by DII at the request of an individual. And I'd just like you to focus upon the evidence Group Captain Wallace gave from line 35 to 40 about culture reviews. Have you seen that?
Yes, I have.
So is that correct, that at your direction, the DII office does not do culture reviews?
Yes, because the inquiry process is not an effective way of inquiring into culture. What we have done in the past is where we identify that there may be cultural issues, that in those circumstances, I have directed that there be an IGADF military justice performance audit to, or, as, and that is done separately to the inquiry process.
And just focusing particularly on the evidence given by Group Captain Wallace. She puts forward your explanation for why you don't exercise that culture review as part of your inquiry function is because, and I quote, "we are not experts in culture." Does that accurately reflect your direction?
Look, I wouldn't say, I wouldn't agree that I have said we are not experts in culture. The, however, there has been experience in defence in the past where inquiry mechanisms, which were dressed up or called cultural reviews, have, or there has been one instance in particular which was a spectacular failure. And for that reason, an inquiry process is not the best way of examining culture. Problems with culture can be exposed during an inquiry process. But then, in order to get a sense of the true extent of culture, there are better mechanisms. And I've given one example of a military justice performance audit as part of doing that, where focus groups with an entire, with the staff of an organisation are conducted and then they can be asked specific questions about the culture of that organisation.
So would it be fair to say from the answer you've just given that you have determined to narrow the scope of what your inquiry function could be because you've reached a view that you don't think your organisation is best placed to undertake those culture reviews?
No, I haven't said that, counsel. I've said that the inquiry process in my office, not my organisation is not best placed, but the inquiry process in my office is not the best mechanism of getting a true read on culture, the culture of an entity or organisation.
And that was my question, that you've determined not to use your inquiry function to examine issues of culture? Have I understood that evidence correctly?
Yes, the, as I've said, because they can, but my view is they can be examined better by other means.
And certainly insofar as Group Captain Wallace has given evidence about expertise in culture. I mean, we talked about this earlier in the context of your DSIR function. It is available to you to retain external assistance and expertise when necessary?
Yes, it is.
And to take, for example, one of your own initiative inquiries, you've obtained the expertise of, I understand, Prue Goward to look into a particular aspect of sexual misconduct within defence. So you can call upon that expertise when required?
Yes.
Just focusing upon...
But I did say earlier, counsel, that I don't agree with what that being, it being said that I have said in the past that I'm, that we are not, the reason we don't do this is because we are not experts.
And I have understood... And, and I have understood that you don't accept that proposition, my question is, even if you don't have the expertise within your office, you could call upon external expertise to assist you with that?
Yes.
I just want to take you to-
But my apologies, counsel, I don't mean to interrupt, but the, 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 the nature, obviously I didn't hear Group Captain Wallace's evidence, but I think she is talking about her directorate, and that the types of inquiries that her directorate undertakes, which are really those ones which come at the request of an, of someone, a request of an individual, or a minister or chief of Defence Force Direction.
Yes, and, and we are on the same page in terms of that. The proposition I am putting to you, which I don't understand to be an issue, is that in terms of the exercise of that function, where there is an individual request, the inquiry will not be used as a mechanism to look at issues of culture? At your direction?
The, yes, that's not to say we don't look at issues of culture, but we don't, but, but that an inquiry process is not a good mechanism for doing so.
And I just want to take you to one example of that. If the operator could please display document number IGD dot zero zero one zero dot triple zero one dot zero two four zero. So this is a noting brief for the Chief of Defence Force dated 29 October 2021. If the operator could please turn to dot zero two four five of that document, and expand paragraph 13. Just take a moment to read that, Mr Gainor, and just to give you context, this forms part of your update about a military justice, under the heading Military Justice Performance Review. So you'll see there, you've been requested to inquire into cultural problems that are thought to be at the heart of military justice issues in two ADF units, you see that?
Yes.
And you would accept, would you not, that there can be a causal connection between a cultural problem and a military justice issue?
Most certainly, counsel.
Do you recall what the outcome of that particular request was in that case?
I do not recall what the outcome of that request was in that particular case. The purpose of that paragraph, of course, is to let the Chief of the Defence Force know that Navy maybe, you know, that Navy had mistakenly become concerned that I was starting a, a new cultural audit programme. The, certainly, as, the, actually, the outcome is coming, is coming back to me, or at least aspects of the outcome are coming back to me. The reason, the, the reason Navy became mistakenly concerned was because we decided to use our audit teams to actually look into the issues that Army and Air Force had raised, and because those, those audits were going to be broader than the standard Military Justice Performance Audit, the staff in the Directorate of Military Justice Performance Review contacted the, the Navy Audit Programme to, to get their guidance about the conduct of, the auditing of, of culture issues.
And just in terms of what purpose audits achieve, you've spoken about this in the response to NTG IGD 002, but in broad terms, I understand that the purpose of an audit is to assess the health of the military justice system, to verify that ADF units have necessary procedures in place to comply with military justice requirements, in the delivery and management of personnel discipline and administration, and to identify any shortcomings. Would you accept that description of what the audit process is directed to?
That's the, a description of the Military Justice Performance Audit Process, yes. What we're talking about here is something else.
That, that's right, accepting that to be the case. In terms of the outcome of the audit, you can make recommendations?
Yes.
And a recommendation will be made when it concerns non-compliance with a policy or a procedure?
In the standard Military Justice Performance Audit, we distinguish between recommendations and suggestions.
And what is the basis of that distinction?
The basis of that distinction is that previously, those audit reports simply made recommendations. The, the, the issue was that, my belief is that a recommendation should be evidence-based, and it should also be, in the case of a, of a, of an audit recommendation, relate to either law or policy, or, or some other requirement that the unit is, is not doing, that the unit needs to do, the audited unit. Suggestions are where because of our, because of our experience, because we see a lot of units and how they operate, we can actually share that knowledge with, with units, and we make suggestions that here is a good, here is a good practice, and our suggestion is that you adopt it.
And, and it might be helpful to ground this exchange in the response. Can the operator please go to IGD dot quadruple nine dot triple zero two dot zero seven three zero, and turn to dot zero seven five one? And expand paragraphs 1.52 and 1.53? Just take a moment to familiarise yourself with that, Mr Gainor. So can I put to you a couple of propositions emerging after, out of those paragraphs? First, an audit won't be a mechanism to identify findings?
Well, no, it doesn't say that, counsel, it says the entire audit report describes the audit findings in respect of each criterion.
So it doesn't use the terminology findings?
Exact, yes.
Would you expect an audit report to include a finding that there is a material deficiency in culture?
The, if, if the, in, in a standard Military Justice Performance Audit, the audit criteria do address the indicia of, of, of some military justice indicia, so the audit does expand beyond the, the, the military justice system to look at causative factors, but in a standard Military Justice Performance Audit, it would be, it would not be standard that, that a Military Justice Performance Audit would make findings about culture, but the audit does assess morale, it does assess, it, it does, it does, it does assess the, the prevalence of, of unreported unacceptable behaviour at the unit, it, so it does look at those aspects of unit culture without describing them as, as culture.
Turning then to what comes out of a audit report, there is a distinction made there between suggestions, which are, correct me if I'm wrong about that, there's no mandate to implement them?
Well, yes, recommendations, as I said earlier, have a legal or policy basis, because we've identified a deficiency, and it's a deficiency that the unit must address, because there is a, a law or policy that mandates the unit to, to remedy the deficiency.
So what gives rise, what gives rise, in your view, to the compulsive nature of a recommendation is that unit Y has not complied with law X, that non-compliance is a breach of law and so must be rectified?
Yes.
But to the extent to which there are any recommendations that will come out of an audit report, they are unlikely to be a recommendation that will address fixing matters of culture?
That's a very, very broad, matters of culture is a very broad concept and a very broad term, counsel. I would need to think about the full range of law and policy applying to military justice and the military justice system, before I could give a definitive answer to, to your question.
And perhaps you can sort of give that some thought over the luncheon adjournment, but really what I'm trying to grapple with is, I understood the effect of your evidence to be, look, our inquiry function is not fit for purpose, or, or is not, ought not be deployed in terms of inquiry into matters of culture, we see the Military Justice Audit Function as being that mechanism?
Well, well, an own initiative inquiry can also be deployed in terms of, to, to look at broader issues. The reason why the Military Justice Inquiry Function is, is not good for looking at culture is because it's, it's a, it's a witness-based model. So individuals are compelled to come and, and give evidence, to answer questions. The, the, it, it can be a stressful experience for, for witnesses. And so in terms of making a cultural appraisal of, of an organisation, that, that very highly individualised process is, is not suitable for gaining an insight into, into unit culture, or not as suitable as, as, as other processes.
And I'll come to own initiative inquiries in a moment, but having regard to the exchange we've just had about the exercise of your Military Justice Audit Function, would it be fair to say that it doesn't have a lot of teeth in terms of identifying and making recommendations about cultural issues that might be underpinning deficiencies in the military justice system?
Well, I have no executive authority to implement recommendations, but if I, if I wanted to look into culture, then, if I, if, if during the course of, and, and if during the course of, of other work in my office, I became aware of a problem with culture in a, in a particular unit, then I have a variety of ways of looking at it. Own initiative inquiries, Military Justice Performance Audits, but the, the Military Justice Inquiry Model, which is essentially a, a, an examination of individual witnesses' model, is not, I think, the best way of examining culture.
Let's look at the exercise of your own initiative function to conduct an inquiry. Can I ask the operator to please turn to IGD dot quadruple nine dot triple zero two dot zero seven three zero, and expand paragraph 4.1 sub-paragraph B? Sorry, it's dot zero seven seven eight of that document, please, operator? And expand paragraph 4.1B. This paragraph sets out, Mr Gainor, the own initiative inquiries you have determined to undertake during the-
Sorry, sorry, which, what, what document is this?
This is your document, it is the response to NTG IGD 002.
And can I see the question that this-
Of course, if the operator could please expand to capture paragraph four as well, which is just above, in bold, just above 4.1? And you might recall, Mr Gainor, the period of time that is captured by this notice is 1 January 2017 until it was produced, I think, which is some dated 2022? July of 2022? That's, that's right?
Sorry, I, I missed the question, I was reading the, I was reading question four.
Of course. What I have suggested to you is that the time period that's captured by this notice is 1 January 2017 until about July 2022.
I will rely on, on you, counsel, if that is what the, how the relevant period referred to in question four was defined.
Now, your response identifies four own initiative inquiries conducted during that period?
Yes.
Are there any own initiative inquiries conducted during that period that are not listed?
I do not believe so.
In terms of the characterisation of those own initiative inquiries and the extent to which they deal with matters of culture, would it be fair to say, with the possible exception of the own initiative inquiry into defences' arrangements for dealing with sexual misconduct in the ADF, the others don't pertain to cultural issues within defence?
I would disagree with that statement, counsel.
So which of those own initiative inquiries pertain to matters of culture and in what respect?
The own initiative inquiry into service police professional standards was an examination of, included the, a, a review of the Code of Conduct. In that respect, it was very much concerned with the, the culture of the service police. The, the prohibited substance testing programme was not a review of culture, but it certainly took into account prohibited substances as part of the, as a, as a cultural problem, and the, and to ensure that the prohibited substance testing programme was, was effective and fit for purpose.
Now, I'm conscious of the time, commissioners, is that a convenient time to adjourn?
Yeah, I think that's fine, I understand we're going to adjourn for half an hour for lunch or thereabouts.
Thank you, Commissioner.
We'll adjourn now.
All rise? The Royal Commission into Defence and Veterans Suicide will adjourn for lunch. The Royal Commission into Defence and Veterans Suicide is now resumed. Please be seated.
Thank you, Miss Longbottom.
Thank you, Commissioner Caldis. Uh, Mr Gainor, two of the bodies in which you participate is the Military Justice Legal Forum and the Military Justice Standing Committee. Have I got that last title correct?
Apologies, the Military Justice Steering Group.
Steering Group. Um, just in terms of the latter group, and I might just call it the Steering Group and the Legal Forum for convenience, what is the status of your participation in that group?
So I attend the Military Justice Steering Group as a permanently invited guest. The Military Justice Steering Group was formerly the Military Justice Coordination Committee and it included, uh, military justice entities other than me. Now I, uh, it, it has become the Military Justice Steering Group and, uh, and I am a permanently invited guest. The, uh, I believe the Judge Advocate General is also a permanently invited guest on that group.
Come back to the Military Justice Legal Forum then. Um, you are a regular attendee of the meetings of that forum?
No, I am not.
How often do you attend it and in what capacity?
I attended the very first ever meeting of it, um, representing my office since then. Either my deputy or one of the lawyers from my office has attended.
Okay. Can I take you to the minutes of one of the meetings of the forum? It's igd dot triple zero seven dot zero zero five dot zero one three zero. So these are the minutes of the meeting held on the first of June twenty twenty two? Was that the inaugural meeting of that forum?
Um, no, no, counsel. Um, the inaugural meeting was, I believe, some years before then.
So you weren't actually an attendee at this meeting?
No.
But can I ask you, can I ask the operator to please turn to uh, dot zero one three three of the document and expand paragraph ten? Have you had an opportunity to read the minutes of this particular meeting?
Sorry, counsel, was that, uh, this, these minutes were part of my tender bundle. My tender bundle was two thousand nine hundred pages long, so I haven't read uh, these minutes, but I will quickly read paragraph ten now.
Really, it's just the first two sentences that make specific reference to you, Mr Gainor?
Yes, I, I've read the first two sentences.
Uh, is it correct that you have provided feedback on the conduct of inquiries?
Um, I, I provide lots of feedback on, on the conduct of inquiries, but um, I, I'm not certain what this is specifically referring to.
Uh, perhaps if I can assist in this way, um, could the operator please display alongside that document? Igd dot triple zero seven dot zero zero one two dot triple zero eight? Are you familiar with this document, Mr Gainor?
No, I'm not, counsel. It, um...
This is a document that was produced by Group Captain Wallace of your office? Are you not aware of the document or its contents?
Um, n- uh, no, counsel. Or at least I don't, I, I may have been shown it, but I don't recall having been shown it.
Group Captain Wallace gave evidence, and I can take you to it, um, that this was a document that she prepared at a request that had been sent through to her from Defence Legal to identify issues with respect to the conduct of inquiries within defence, so it doesn't pertain to inquiries conducted by your office. It pertains specifically to doc- to the conduct of inquiries by defence. I, I must say, I find it quite surprising that this document hasn't come to your attention. Does that surprise you?
Um, uh, it, it does not surprise me. Certainly, the, um, uh, you know, Group Captain Wallace is a senior, senior official in my office. If she has been asked to provide, you know, information like this, she would uh, be the best, the, the subject matter expert to do so. And she would also be aware of, uh, my thoughts on many of the issues that she has identified.
Uh, are the issues identified in this document issues that are known to you about the conduct of inquiries within defence?
Uh, uh, yes, counsel.
A- and you would accept that on their face, there are some quite serious issues that are identified with respect to the conduct of inquiries by defence?
Uh, yes, counsel, and we identify these in, a- a- as part of the review work that my office does in, uh, in the military justice inquiry space.
The findings include that there are manifest unfairness in outcomes, there's a lack of procedural fairness, there are findings not supported by evidence, um, have you...
Well, sorry, go on, counsel.
Do, do you take issue with the issues that are identified in this document?
I don't take issue with the issues, counsel.
Are they issues of which you are aware?
Well, um, they are issues of which I'm aware, but it would be wrong to say that they are um, universal problems in every defence inquiry.
Have they sparked curiosity on your po- part as to how systemic these issues are?
Uh, the, um, they have not sparked curiosity because I do not regard these issues as, um, necessarily systemic. There are a couple of issues there about which I have, um, written to the, or one issue that I can see that, about which I have written to the Chief of the Defence Force at least, to, to raise my concerns. The, uh, the others, for example, the manifest unfairness in outcomes, um, the comments are, are, uh, it's obvious from the comments that they refer to an inquiry, not to, to, um, to a, a multitude of inquiries.
How have you satisfied yourself that these issues aren't systemic?
Uh, because they do not arise, counsel, in, in every, uh, i- i- in every inquiry that, that we review as part of the work of my office. They are, um, they are, uh, they are lapses that, that occur. But, um, any lapse, once identified, is something that can be addressed.
But you would appreciate that there is a distinction between addressing individual deficiencies and identifying and making recommendations in relation to systemic deficiencies?
Uh, the... Um, o- once again, the, the, uh, the issues that I've, that, you know, the title of this document is issues identified in IGADF inquiries concerning the conduct of inquiries. It's not to suggest that every issue in the left-hand column there is a, uh, a feature of every inquiry that my office has, uh, has, has reviewed. The, a- a- and I've already mentioned that at least one item on the list there is, is something about which I was, um, concerned a- and I have written to the Chief of, Chief of the Defence Force about it.
Mr Gainor, going back to the military, um, legal forum minutes, certainly those two sentences at paragraph ten that I've taken you to suggest that at least on the army, sorry, the Defence Force side, there are perceptions about difficulties with the conduct of inquiries, which applies to both fact finds as well as defence inquiries themselves. You have also been asked to provide feedback of inquiries, and that was the particular reason this issue was raised in a forum about military justice issues. My question is really why you have not, um, do you think it is apt? And if not, why to use your own initiative functions to undertake an inquiry into the issues that are suggested by this document?
Be- because, counsel, uh, inquiries can always be improved. An issue that arises in one inquiry can indicate that there may be a lack of knowledge about that inquiry. It doesn't need an own initiative inquiry from me. We've already identified the issues and drawn them to the attention of defence.
Mr Gainor, this document doesn't on its face, um, identify that each of the issues are confined to one single case. There is, I, I know you've drawn specific attention to manifest unfairness outcomes, which is prefaced in the right-hand column by the words "in this example", but what leads you to believe that this document is confined to individual instances?
Um, I, I did not say that, uh, counsel. The, I gave that, uh, I gave that example as, uh, uh, a- a- as, um, my reading of this document is not that these are necessarily systemic issues. However, they are issues that we have identified in, in at least one inquiry in that case and, uh, and some in others. Doesn't mean that they are systemic issues. It, uh, it simply means that they are, they may, uh, point to, um, uh, w- w- that they are things that should not be happening, happening in any inquiry and therefore we are drawing them, them to attention so that defence can address them. There's, I, I haven't, I, I must say that looking down on the left-hand side of that list, although part of it is obscured, um, the, uh, I, I wouldn't describe any of those issues as being issues that I regard as, um, so widespread as to indicate a systemic problem.
How do you know how widespread they are?
Uh, because, uh, uh, because of the, uh, the audit programme, which looks at the conduct of inquiries and fact findings as part of, as part of that, as als- as well as the, um, uh, the assessments which I get to, uh, to read. I, I read every assessment that's, that, that is done in the Directorate of Inquiries and Investigations. So these are problems that have arisen in some inquiries or, you know, at least one inquiry and, and, uh, they have been, uh, drawn to the department's attention.
Let me take you to the evidence that Group Captain Wallace gave about this particular document. Operator, can you please display eight two dot eight zero, sorry, dash eight zero five nine of the transcript? So it's eight zero five nine. And if you could please expand from, um, line fifteen to line thirty one? And you'll see there, Mr Gainor, I'll give you an opportunity to read it, that there's an exchange between Commissioner Brown and Group Captain Wallace about the document I've just taken you to.
Could I see the entire page, please?
Yes.
Could I read the next page too, please? Right, thank, thanks, counsel.
Mr Gainor, Commissioner Brown, in the context of discussing this document, issues identified in IGADF inquiries concerning the conduct of inquiries, squarely puts to Group Captain Wallace that the defence inquiry and sys- inquiry system is not a well-functioning system. The evidence given by Group Captain Wallace in respect of that proposition is, I think in respect of this particular issue, it is not. Now, that's a very different characterisation than you have given about systemic issues with respect to Defence's conduct of inquiries. Does it surprise you that there's a disconnect in the views you hold and those of the director in charge of the, the Directorate of Investigations and Inquiries?
Well, I don't, um, sorry, I've just got to focus again. Uh, looking, a- a- and this is the first time I've seen, uh, Group Captain Wallace's evidence, but the, um...
She says, and I quote, "I think in respect of this particular issue, it is not." Do you cavil with that proposition?
Well, except, uh, I, I don't, I don't cavil with that proposition that, um, but, but they're talking about quality assurance, are they not?
The question that was put to Group Captain Wallace is whether it is a well-functioning system. That question was put in the context of this document that I've just taken you to, and I can put it up again, that identifies issues such as
Yes.
that the conduct in, conduct of inquiries includes findings not supported by evidence.
But, but what is, what is the particular issue that Group Captain Wallace is referring to there?
Commissioners, I, I apologise for interrupting, but I, I think what is being put to the witness is not a correct characterisation of the evidence that is given. The question that Group Captain Wallace was asked was whether the implication that Commissioner Brown had drawn from the comment was that it is not a well-functioning system. And she says, is that a fair inference from what you have said? Group Captain Wallace's answer was, I think in respect of this particular issue, it is not, because I think we have the capacity to, and then she goes on to give further explanation. In my submission, Group Captain Wallace's evidence is not that she is agreeing that it is a well, not a well-functioning system. What she's saying is that is not the inference to be drawn from the comment.
I must say, that's the way I read it too. Miss Longbottom?
I have to say, that's not the way I took it in her response. I, I took it that she meant it was not a well-functioning system in this instance.
Well, it's ambiguous.
Okay, well, I, I'll put it this way. Mr Gainor? Mr. Gaynor, do you think that the way in which defence conducts its inquiries is a well-functioning system?
I think any assessment of the phrase, the way defence conducts it in its inquiries requires more complexity than can be captured in one word or two words. So, counsel, there are aspects of the way that defence conducts inquiries that function well. There are other aspects of the way that defence conducts inquiries that could function better. There are sometimes and always mistakes that are made, but I do not necessarily think that those mistakes are systemic, that they are mistakes of implementation.
Let's phrase, let me ask you the question in the context of the issues document, igd dot triple zero seven dot zero zero one two dot triple zero eight. In your view, are there any systemic issues in the conduct of inquiries within defence of the type that are identified in this table?
I do not think that there is anything in that list that is, occurs on such a widespread basis that it could be described as systemic. I have, sorry, the one exception to that is the labelling of complainants, example vexatious litigant and sense of entitlement. And that is an issue about which I have written to Angus Campbell in the past to raise my concerns, that I thought that that labelling was a systemic issue. Or I did not use the word systemic issue in my correspondence, but I was sufficiently concerned by it to write to him because I had seen it across several inquiries.
And what are the tools you use to identify whether or not a particular issue, such as those identified in this table, are systemic?
So the tools that I use are the Audit Programme, as well as the prevalence of these issues across the work that my office does and the work that it reviews.
And so in terms of the issues identified in this table, you have no present intention to conduct an own-initiative inquiry to determine whether or not any of those issues are systemic?
I think there are more important issues that could be the subject of an own-initiative inquiry. It's not to say that I don't think these issues are important, counsel. It's simply that I believe that there are more important issues.
And how do you determine what gets priority in terms of an own-initiative inquiry?
So it depends very much. It depends very much on the inquiry subject matter, but the, my source material for the raising of concerns, for example, is drawn from each of the directorates in my office, principally the Directorate of Military Justice Performance Review, but also from Rejettive Grievance Complaints, and of course, from the Directorate of Inquiries and Investigations, and the Directorate of Select Incident Review. And where issues arise and they appear to be to be happening in a way that looks like it's happening in more than one instance and without any other link, then that will often be one of the reasons that I apply in deciding whether or not to conduct an own-initiative inquiry. On other occasions, my decision to conduct an own-initiative inquiry has been because there have been significant changes either in workforce or in policy or in law relating to the particular subject matter and the purpose of my own-initiative inquiry in those, for those matters, is to examine whether those policies, laws and new workforce are operating effectively and particularly fairly.
Let's examine that, Mr. Gaynor, in the context of the two own-initiative inquiries you conducted in 2020. One of those was into the publication of courts, martial and defence force magistrate trials. The other one was into the A D F prohibited substance testing programme. What was the process of reasoning that led you to determine that these were the two issues that ought to take priority in terms of the application of your resources for own-initiative inquiries?
The prohibited substance testing programme had, but there were three reasons, three main reasons that I decided to look into the prohibited substance testing programme. The first was
Sorry, can I just stop you there? My question is not so much the reasons why you decided to look into that specifically, but the reasons why that was a priority for you over the variety of matters about which you might, within the scope of your jurisdiction, have an own-initiative inquiry?
The outcomes of unfairness in the prohibited substance testing programme directly affect A D F members and their service in the A D F. In other words, the prohibited substance testing programme leads to termination of service when there is a positive test. So it is very important that that testing programme be conducted fairly, and it's very important that that testing, that the laws and policy relating to that testing programme operate fairly. So it's, for me, because it affects the livelihoods of A D F members in a material way, as well as their reputations, that was the reason, that was one of the reasons that I prioritised the prohibited substance testing programme. In relation to the publication of trials, that was a decision that I had taken at the time that that policy was introduced to, it's the publication of of an accused person's personal information. And for that reason, I decided to conduct an own-initiative inquiry into that programme, public publication of trials after it had been in operation for one year, to make sure that the desire to communicate military justice outcomes more publicly was being balanced with the rights of individual A D F members.
I'm going to take you now, Mr. Gaynor, to the minutes of a meeting of the Military Justice Steering Group held on the 24th of March 2022. Operator, can you please display igd dot triple zero seven dot triple zero six dot zero one two one? And if you could please turn to dot zero one two three. And if you could please expand paragraphs seven to 10. I'll give you an opportunity to read those, Mr. Gaynor.
Yes, counsel?
You will see there, Mr. Gaynor, there is a discussion about how mental health issues are being dealt with in the military justice discipline system. At the end of paragraph seven, you are recorded as noting that the military justice system is not the only jurisdiction dealing with these issues, but the D F D A is trailing behind civilian legislation in this sense.
Yes, counsel.
Am I right to understand that the reference to D F D A is to be construed as a reference to the Defence Force Discipline Act?
Yes, counsel.
Can you give the commissioners an overview of what, in what respects you consider the D F D A is trailing behind civilian legislation insofar as it concerns mental health issues?
The Defence Force Discipline Act provisions for mental health are out of date. They have been the subject of numerous reviews and proposals for policy reform. There has been a, there has even been draft legislation prepared in the past to, to modernise the mental health provisions for the, in the D F D A. The context, if I'm recalling the correct meeting, the context of this discussion was about the the fact that further legislative reform was unlikely to be achieved because of other legislative priorities. And so it was suggested that mental health reform be taken off the forward work plan. And my advice to the Military Justice Steering Group was that the mental health provisions should remain, updating mental health should remain under, should remain on the forward work plan because it was too important an issue to be allowed to lapse.
Can I take you then, Mr. Gaynor, to paragraph nine of the minutes, where you are noted as recording that the issue of weaponisation of the military justice system against members is an area that this Royal Commission is very interested in? That is a matter that you are, I take it from these notes, aware of?
Most certainly, counsel.
And I see you
Well, I was aware that it was an issue that had been raised in the Royal Commission, yes.
And I see you say there that it's not a matter that you've identified, but you are at least aware that this Royal Commission has had a series of witnesses saying that they were poorly dealt with by the discipline system and that that had exacerbated mental health issues for them. Has this prompted you to consider taking an own-initiative inquiry to identify whether or not there are any systemic issues with respect to the weaponisation of the military justice system against members?
Counsel, my views on this issue have changed in the intervening well, more than one year. The, and when I have the time and I have had other priorities, my intention is that there will be an own-initiative inquiry into the weaponisation of the military justice system. But setting up that inquiry will take some time, setting up its parameters, because weaponisation is a very vague term. But it is my intention to conduct an inquiry.
Can I ask, Mr. Gaynor, is it the evidence that has come out of this Royal Commission that has changed your view from 24 March 2022 that the issue of weaponisation of the military justice system is a matter that ought to be the subject of an own-initiative inquiry?
No, counsel, although the evidence that's come out of this Royal Commission has certainly informed me. I have received a submission which raises this as a specific issue. And I've also become aware of other issues that I think could be examined as part of such an own-initiative inquiry.
What are those other issues and how far back do they date?
They are very recent, Senator, sorry, gosh, I've done it again, my apologies, counsel. The other issues are a conflating of some aspects of the discipline system with the administrative system. And so
Can I just stop you there? Are you talking about the issues that were the subject of the paper from Justice Logan in 2018?
No, but I regard those issues as also part of the scope of a of an own-initiative inquiry into, and I hesitate to use the word weaponisation because I do think it's unclear what it means, but I'll use it for this purpose. Certainly aspects of Justice Logan's views and would, I think, be part of an own-initiative inquiry into this.
I'll take you in a moment to your definition of, or your understanding of what the expression weaponisation means. But in terms of the changing of your view from March 2022 until today, certainly issues of the type that are raised by Justice Logan are well-known. He published his paper in 2018. Do matters such as the publication of that paper not give you cause for curiosity to identify whether or not this is in fact a systemic issue?
Justice Logan is speaking about a very specific issue. Justice Logan's, Justice Logan is concerned by the use of administrative action to terminate A D F members who have been found guilty in D F D A proceedings and where a punishment of dismissal has not, where the service tribunal has not imposed a punishment of dismissal.
Just stop you there. I'm aware of what Justice Logan's paper addresses. My question is, are the matters addressed in that paper, did they not put you on notice or give you cause for curiosity to identify whether or not that was a more systemic issue?
The answer, counsel, is no. And the reason for that is that there is a difference between termination that can be imposed by a delegate administratively and dismissal that a service tribunal may impose. Justice Logan's, the two processes are quite separate. There is nothing unlawful about a service taking administrative action following a conviction for a criminal offence or for a conduct that includes a service offence. But the the Defence Force Discipline Appeals Tribunal has raised this as an issue in over-dictor comments. The issue that they have identified is that they believe that terminating the service of an A D F member in circumstances where a service tribunal has decided not to dismiss them is in breach of the, one aspect of the Defence Force Discipline Act, or at least if not in breach of the of the, if not strictly in breach, in breach of the spirit of that provision. So Justice Logan, in two recent judgments, has also mentioned that he is going to refer particular cases to, or particular issues, or he's asked the registrar of the federal court to refer issues to my office for examination for a variety of reasons. That is, you know, those are also some of the reasons why an own initiative inquiry into this subject is desirable.
Can I ask, just in terms of what's raised in paragraph nine of these minutes, why was the evidence that you're aware of, that had been heard by the Royal Commission, not sufficient to prompt curiosity to determine whether or not an own initiative inquiry should be held into the issue of weaponisation of the military justice system?
I wouldn't characterise it quite in that way, counsel. The advantage of the focus groups that are conducted as part of IGADF audits is that they are the only window into defence that I have that does not originate in an incident or an accident or a death or a complaint.
Can I just stop you there? This paragraph records your understanding that the Royal Commission has had a series of witnesses saying that they were poorly dealt with by the discipline system and that it had exacerbated mental health issues for them. Now, I understood you to say earlier that at this time you did not think those issues warranted an own initiative inquiry? Have I understood that correctly?
Well, I've explained why in the previous sentence, while this had not been something the IGADF had identified in their focus group responses during unit level military justice audits as a systemic issue.
So am I right to understand that, as has been the case here, there is a disconnect between what your audits are recording and evidence that has come out of a Royal Commission, that you will preference the audits over that other type of information?
I was about to explain why, counsel, that the audit information is, and I'm not discounting the witnesses who have come forward to the Royal Commission at all. But they are, the witnesses to which I was referring to there were witnesses who had been poorly dealt with by the discipline system. The advantage of the audit focus groups is that I get I get information about the views of the broader Defence Force community about the discipline system, about the about military justice, the military justice system and how it is being applied.
So you weren't curious about the disconnect between the witnesses that had come to the Royal Commission and what your audits were showing?
Counsel, in other parts of my office, I receive redress of grievance complaints, and I don't receive them, but the office considers redress of grievance complaints. The office also receives submissions from ADF members and from families of ADF members and from members of the public about concerns about the application of the military justice system to them. I take all of those matters extremely seriously, but I take all of those matters extremely seriously, but the but the focus groups, the feedback that I get from focus groups, which amount to about three per cent of the entire ADF population each year and are therefore a really useful representative sample of that population. The feedback that I was receiving at that time did not suggest that there was a systemic issue with the weaponisation of the military justice system.
I want to shift, Mr. Gaynor, to the question of recommendations that come out of inquiries conducted by the DII. What oversight mechanisms exist within your office to monitor the implementation of recommendations that come out of inquiry reports?
So for any inquiry report that is delivered to the Australian Defence Force Headquarters, then we rely on the Australian Defence Force Headquarters. They will actually come up with an implementation plan. In respect of other inquiries, we do not have a mechanism within IGADF to check on the implementation of recommendations. We do in respect of redresses of grievance, we do in respect of audit recommendations, and of course in the Directive of Select Incident Review, all recommendations go to Defence Force Headquarters. This is a lapse that we have identified and that is why, that is part of what the post-engagement team is going to do.
So I take it, in terms of that lapse, would you accept that that lapse compromises the effectiveness of your oversight role of the military justice system?
I don't agree that it necessarily compromises my effectiveness, but it is certainly something that no one else is doing and that my office is going to step in and start doing.
And in terms of the recommendations that come out of DII reports, would it be a fair proposition that those recommendations tend not to be framed in terms of action that must be taken, but rather in terms of action that defence consider taking?
As I mentioned in my evidence yesterday, I have no executive authority and so my recommendations are expressed as that defence do something or consider doing something.
Do you consider that that lack of executive authority undermines your effectiveness as an oversight of the military justice system?
I wouldn't say that it undermines my effectiveness in overseeing the military justice system. If an issue is sufficiently important, well, no. I wouldn't say that it undermines my effectiveness necessarily of overseeing the military justice system, counsel. I can make recommendations. It is like other inspectors general and like some other oversight bodies. It is for the overseen agency to work out the best way of implementing those recommendations in a way that I simply don't have the wherewithal or the knowledge to do.
I want to take you back, Mr. Gaynor, to the Military Justice Steering Group. Am I correct that in or about 2020, the terms of reference of that committee were reviewed?
They are often reviewed, counsel.
And as part of that review, there was a new membership structure that was considered?
I do not recall specifically the the review to which you're referring, but I could be reminded by documents.
Let me ask you, let me put the question this way. Do you recall, Mr. Gaynor, that in June of 2022, at a meeting of that committee, you asked that your status be changed from member to a permanently invited guest?
That was, it's not that I, well.
Let me take you to the minute, it's igd dot triple zero seven dot triple zero six dot zero one three one. And can the operator please turn to dot zero one three three and expand paragraph ten?
Yes.
So, Mr. Gaynor, you will see that minute records that at that meeting you requested your status be transitioned to a permanently invited guest rather than a member. Why did you make that request?
The constitution or the governing document of the Military Justice Steering Group was being reviewed. As I mentioned earlier, the Military Justice Steering Group was previously the Military Justice Coordination Committee. It included other military justice entities, in addition to the Judge Advocate General, the JAG, referred to there, and me. The nature of my involvement in that steering group is such that I thought that I would be better described as a permanently invited guest. And this was part of a review of the membership of the group as a whole.
You will see, Mr. Gaynor, that the minutes record that one of the reasons you gave for that request is that it would better reflect independence? Can you give the commissioners an overview of your reasoning behind that?
The Military Justice Steering Group's role is to advise the Chief of the Defence Force on military justice policy and changes to military justice law. The role that I have always had on that committee and in that group has been that I will not play a role in policy development. And I have always made it plain that what I will do is I will identify, that if they are discussing a policy development which I have seen not work in the past or where I identify fundamental problems with that policy, then I will express those views. But it is my view that it is for the department to develop military justice policy and for me to review it. On that basis, I, when the issue of membership of the group was being reviewed, I suggested that I be described as a permanently invited guest.
Were you concerned that your being described as a member would create at least a perception of lack of independence?
I was concerned that being described as a member would mischaracterise the role that I play on that committee, on that group.
We are running out of time, Mr. Gaynor, but I will take you to one last document today. Operator, can you please display document ACA dot one zero zero one dot triple zero one dot one seven five eight? And can you please turn, operator, to the next page and expand paragraph eight? Sorry, this appears to be the wrong document, operator. It is ACA dot one zero zero one dot triple zero one dot one seven five eight. So the document that's displayed now is dot one eight five nine, yes? If you could turn to the next page of that document, which is dot one seven five nine, and expand paragraph eight. Mr. Gaynor, this is an extract from your noting brief for the CDF in July of 2021. You will see there is reference in that paragraph to a meeting you had with the head of the Royal Commission Task Force on the first of July, 2021?
Yes.
See that?
Yes.
And you record that in that meeting, you emphasised the need for defence to present balanced responses to any submissions that defence officials have acted unreasonably in making decisions about suicide or next of kin engagement. Why would you be providing advice to the task force about those matters, given your role of statutory independence?
Counsel, the reason that I provided that advice is because I was very concerned by something the head of the task force had said.
And what was it that was said to you that gave you cause for concern?
What gave me cause for concern was that the head of the task force said words to the effect of, well, the ADF will will accept all of the criticisms from the- My concern about that comment was that it's, whenever one talks about the Defence Force, one is not talking about an organisation, one is talking about officials in that organisation. When it comes to suicide or next of kin engagement, individual members of the Defence Force who are who have worked with or been friends with or who who otherwise have interacted with someone who has died by suicide will be left questioning judgements they have made, decisions they have made, and the way that they have treated individuals. The reason why-
Can I just stop you there? Before you go on, Mr. Gaynor, I just want to have a proper understanding of the comment that gave you concern.
The comment that gave me concern was that the ADF would not be responding to criticisms that people raised in connection with suicide or next of kin engagement.
And criticisms raised in what manner? Criticisms raised before the Royal Commission?
Not necessarily. I was, I am, a suicide in the Defence Force has an impact on a larger group of people, on a large group of people. And those people include officials and, or not officials, but members of the Defence Force who have worked with or been friends with or managed the person who has died by suicide. The reason I said I want, the reason I advocated balanced responses was not to not to not to to prevent anyone from being critical of the ADF, but to make sure that the needs of individual ADF members would not be overlooked. I have dealt with a case where someone who has been criticised in this Royal Commission, who was not identified by name but could be identified by role, was extremely troubled by that evidence, it was from a lived experience witness. And that person's chain of command contacted me And that person's chain of command contacted me, and I subsequently wrote to that individual explaining that the IG ADF inquiry into the relevant suicide had not made any adverse findings about that person, that neither had other external authorities in their reviews of that suicide. So it's not to say that I am... It's not to say that I am trying to defend one particular group of people or another. I just wanted to make sure that there would be a balanced response in connection with suicide in the Defence Force to recognise that decisions that are made are often made by individual ADF members, and criticisms of the ADF in connection with that can be felt and can be very damaging for those individuals.
Commissioners, I'm conscious of the time. Given that, it may be necessary for me to stop my questioning now and give you an opportunity to ask any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Longbottom. Commissioner Brown?
I'm conscious that we don't actually have much time, but, Mr. Gaynor, I just have one question that I do feel I need to ask. The role of the IG ADF is to provide independent oversight of the military justice system and other functions such as review of deaths. What we've heard over yesterday and today is that you have staffing challenges, you have challenges sometimes with timeliness. Sometimes that's to do with the staffing challenges or other challenges. You struggle to find accountability measures that you can report to the public. We've heard that there are changes in your processes that you haven't yet reflected in updated documentation. We've heard that some of your QA processes could perhaps be strengthened. We've heard that there's been a breach of the requirement to inform families when inquiries are... Serious Incident Reviews or Death Reviews have been finalised. We've questioned about how you examine the issue of relationship breakdown and understand how that's connected to service. And the reason that's important is because it comes up as a big issue and a contributing, well, an associated factor with suicides. We heard last week, I think it was, that there was a very small percentage of redress of grievances that actually get upheld by... Through the redress of grievance process, that most go back to chain of command and are not, as I say, not upheld. We've heard issues about the conduct of inquiries in defence. You don't think they're systemic. We know that one of the perceptions is that perhaps the Office of the IG ADF lacks independence. We just heard now that you're not placed to follow up on the implementation of recommendations. And that's a small list of things I've just noted as we've sat here this afternoon. I know that you're proposing a review of the Office of the IG ADF. But the question I would ask you today is, should service members and their families, and should this Royal Commission, have confidence in the functioning of the Office of the IG ADF, that it is an appropriate oversight mechanism as it currently operates?
My answer, Commissioner, is yes. Some of the premise of your question is not entirely accurate, if I can respectfully put that. I'm unaware of evidence that was given last week about the percentage of redress of grievance complaints that are not upheld. My last annual report reports that, I think it's a figure of about 20% of redress of grievance complaints are resulting in a finding that the complaint has merit. Please don't quote me on the figure, but that's roughly the figure. In connection with the following up of recommendations, it's only very few recommendations from inquiry reports that we have not been following up in all other parts of my office, the redress of grievance complaints area, the Directorate of Select Incident Review, and the Directorate of Military Justice Performance Review. There are mechanisms in place to ensure implementation of those recommendations. And even in the Directorate of Inquiries and Investigations, there are mechanisms... Sorry, even in that Directorate, most of... All recommendations that are communicated to Defence Force Headquarters arising out of that Directorate's inquiries are also the subject of formal implementation plans. So it's only a very small number of the recommendations that my office makes as a whole, which are not followed up. I've lost track of the other factors that you've mentioned, but my office deals with hundreds of cases each year. We have been experiencing a surge in demand. People would not be coming to us if they did not feel that we were not doing a reasonably good job. If people did not have confidence in the IG ADF, then we would not be experiencing the surge in the caseload, which over the last four years has amounted to about an increase of about 60 to 70% of cases. And this year looks like it's going to be an even bigger year than before. So for those reasons... And to finish my answer, I think that the IG ADF does provide effective oversight. It's not to say that we can't improve, and I've outlined the improvements that we are already making to address some of the other issues that you've mentioned.
Thank you. Commissioner Douglas?
I have no further questions. Thank you.
Can I just return to a question that you asked earlier, though, please, Commissioner? And that will be very brief, but it was about international models. And over the lunch break, I was thinking about that question and about the independence of someone like me with a background as an ADF lawyer. And I just wanted to mention that the High Court has, on several occasions, considered the independence and suitability of the system of courts martial and Defence Force magistrate. And they have said that having uniformed officers in those cases as the independent judicial officers in those tribunals is lawful and also demonstrates their independence. They haven't had any concerns about uniformed officers being the heads of those organisations. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just had one issue, and I apologise for going back to something we discussed earlier. I do now realise that you had an involution inquiry... I know that's not the appropriate term, but in relation to dealing with sex abuse matters within the ADF.
Yes.
And you mentioned you were not aware of the Arbor Inquiry in Canada, which was specifically focused on how the Canadian Defence Forces deal with issues of sex abuse investigations.
Sorry, can you tell me the name of the...
There was an inquiry conducted by Madame Arbor, who is a prominent judge in Canada, which has been not only a seminal inquiry, I think it's probably going to fundamentally change, I don't think I'm overstating it, how the Canadian Defence Force deals with investigations of sexual abuse. She's made a number of recommendations, one of which is that, I'm paraphrasing, the Defence Force cannot investigate itself in terms of serious criminal matters. I would have thought it would be seminal for your office as well, Mr. Gaynor.
The own initiative inquiry that we conducted was conducted a couple of years ago, Commissioner. If it has slipped my memory, then I apologise if it is referred to in that report. In terms of sexual misconduct in the Defence Force, though, our focus group surveys, which are not susceptible to, which are not flawed because of self-selection bias, demonstrate that ADF members, that 90% of ADF members have confidence that a complaint of sexual abuse would be the subject of appropriate action. Since regression analyses have demonstrated that the best way to drive down misconduct in a particular area is where ADF members have confidence that appropriate action is going to be taken, because that confidence encourages complainers to come forward, and it also discourages perpetrators from engaging in the conduct in the first place, then sexual misconduct in the Defence Force is not an issue about which I have any pressing concerns at present.
I appreciate that. So the answer is neither you nor your office were really aware of Madame Arbor's inquiry and report?
Commissioner, I may have been aware in the past, but I did not recall it when you mentioned it to me.
Thank you.
Commissioners?
Ms. Moore?
I don't have any questions for Mr. Gaynor, but could I raise the possibility, please, of him being given an opportunity to put on a statement to deal with two particular matters? One is that, following the examination yesterday in relation to the guidance material in place prior to November 2022 in relation to the Select Incident Review Directorate, there've been some documents produced overnight. It may be useful for Mr. Gaynor to have an opportunity to review those documents and provide some explanation of them. That may be of assistance to the tribunal, pardon me, to the commission. And the second point is that Mr. Gaynor was told in advance of the hearing not to watch the evidence of the other staff from within the Office of the Inspector General, and he has done that. He's been taken today to a small number of extracts from the transcript, but it may be that once he's had an opportunity to review the transcript, there may be some additional matters which he would want to give some evidence to clarify. So I would seek an opportunity for him to do that.
Thank you, Ms. Longbottom.
I just need to correct one matter from my friend. She said that Mr. Gaynor was told not to. That's not correct. Mr. Gaynor was told that it was our preference that he not see the evidence of other witnesses from his office. But putting that to one side, we can engage with our friends about Mr. Gaynor putting on another statement about the matters that have been raised by the Commonwealth.
Ms. Moore, is there anything further you wish to add? Or we've noted what you've said, obviously.
Thank you. No, there's nothing further. Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay. Ms. Longbottom, are there any matters arising?
No, not at this stage. Thank you, Commissioner Curtis.
I guess if there's no other issues to be raised administratively or otherwise, we're going to close shortly. Are there any other issues anyone wishes to raise?
Sorry, Mr. Gaynor ought to be released from his summons. Thank you, Commissioner Curtis.
Mr. Gaynor, thank you for your evidence, and we know there was considerable effort put into the preparation, obviously, which we do appreciate. Your excuse from your summons to appear for today.
Thank you, Commissioner.
We're going to close, so feel free to move, or you can remain there, it's fine. Thank you, ladies and gents. On behalf of my fellow commissioners and our team, I want to thank everyone who was engaged with the Royal Commission during our time in Melbourne. It's been very heartening to meet with members of the Victorian Defence and Veteran community to hear firsthand about the unique challenges they face, as well as the services which are supporting them and their families. As we have said, this Royal Commission is examining deep-rooted cultural and systemic issues that have failed our serving and ex-serving Australian Defence Force personnel and their families for decades, and which have contributed to and are continuing to contribute to high rates of suicide and suicidality in our military community. This 11th public hearing was focused on a number of key areas of investigation: the experience of ADF personnel transitioning to civilian life, cultural problems within defence, and how the hierarchy manages complaints relating to unacceptable behaviour; the lack of support from Defence and the Department of Veteran Affairs for veterans and their families; the military justice system in the ADF and how that is monitored; the independence of the Office of the Inspector General of the ADF; the IG ADF's investigative processes, including how it engages with the loved ones of members whose deaths they're investigating. The evidence we've heard over the past fortnight has again raised serious questions as to whether the upper echelons within defence are committed to tackling the issues of suicide and suicidality within its ranks, and whether they actually accept there is a problem in the first place. We started this hearing block with lived experience evidence from Julie Anne Finney, who petitioned the former Morrison government for a Royal Commission after her son, David Finney, died by suicide in 2019. Ms. Finney was one of a group who campaigned long and hard for this inquiry into what is undeniably a national tragedy. David Finney was a 20-year-old Navy veteran who had received a brave recommendation and was a poster boy for an ADF recruitment programme. In harrowing testimony, Ms. Finney recounted the Navy's lack of care and support for David as he struggled with thoughts of suicide. David was involuntarily medically discharged from the Navy while in hospital, receiving treatment in 2017. He died by suicide two years later. Ms. Finney also gave evidence about the advocacy work that she does on behalf of countless veterans across the country. We commissioners commend Ms. Finney for her courage in sharing her deeply personal experience with us and for her ongoing advocacy work in support of the veteran community. We don't know if we can reduce the number of veteran suicides to zero, but as Ms. Finney told the Royal Commission, and I quote, "We have to try because then we'll know we're doing our best." Nobody, nobody, in defence, in DVA, at a government level, and a lot of larger ESOs, nobody's doing their best. We heard from a panel of defence representatives who spoke about the services available to members transitioning to civilian life. This panel was preceded by a panel of four ADF members, three of whom had transitioned and one of whom is in the process of transitioning. It was difficult to reconcile the perspectives that were given in these two panels, and it was frustrating for us to hear from the defence witnesses that, from their point of view, there is currently no problem with the way defence prepares members for transition. This is certainly not consistent with what we've been hearing over the past two years. We've again heard over the course of this hearing that a toxic culture of abuse, bullying and harassment seemingly continues to exist within the ADF. It's troubling to imagine that such behaviour persists in any modern-day workplace. What is even more concerning is that an employer could neglect or mishandle a complaint or misconduct or target the complainant, leaving them re-traumatised. Former Air Force chaplain Reverend Dr. Nicky Coleman told us how reluctant she felt the defence hierarchy had been to act against a colleague whom she had accused of sexually abusing her. We heard that Dr. Coleman felt the institution protected her alleged abuser to the detriment of her own career, reputation, and mental health. Dr. Coleman was not advised of the outcome of her complaint or what action was taken, supposedly to protect the alleged perpetrator's privacy. In concluding her testimony, Dr. Coleman sent a strong message to the defence leadership, and I quote, "You lack the moral courage to stand up to the bullies, the abusers, and the sexual perverts who prey on the men and women who've signed up to protect their country and serve under you. You lie when you say you take unacceptable behaviour and more serious abuse seriously. You lie when you say that people are your most important assets." End quote. While defence and veterans matters constitutionally are a Commonwealth responsibility, the states and territories have a role to play too in providing health, social, and other ancillary services for veterans and their families. During this hearing, we've examined how the Commonwealth and Victorian governments cooperate on matters relating to veterans and the supports available through the Victorian Government to serving and ex-serving members. We're grateful to Premier Daniel Andrews for giving evidence at the Royal Commission, and note that he is the first state or territory premier or first minister to appear before us. Premier Andrews spoke about the challenges his government faces in trying to support the state's veteran community due to a lack of data provided by the Commonwealth and its agencies, and I quote, "It serves us as a significant barrier to us, not just delivering services, but building trust and building a relationship with people, often many of whom are vulnerable. It is a real barrier to us doing more and doing better for a group of people who deserve the best of our efforts." End quote. We heard that the Victorian Government provides DVA advocacy support to veterans through the Office of Veterans and... the Office of Veterans and, and the Veterans Council. The fact that a state government needs to help its constituents navigate the systems of the Commonwealth Government speaks volume about how difficult, and to quote the premier, impregnable those systems are. The premier was also highly critical of the adversarial culture within DVA. This Royal Commission continues to hear from often vulnerable veterans and their families through hearings, through private sessions and through submissions about the deep-rooted cultural and system-wide issues within DVA, which are impeding timely access to services and support. In his evidence before us this week, Dr Felix Sedal, who was a medical advisor within DVA, painted somewhat of a bleak picture of the department. Dysfunction with poor leadership, a kind of blame of culture. Many disempowered staff amongst a few powerful warlords, not focused on veterans and not terribly open to innovation. A recurring theme of the evidence we commissioners have heard is that DVA must become more veteran-centric. Asked what the ideal claim system would look like, Dr Sedal told this hearing, and I quote, "A well-functioning system would be able to take into account the voices of people like Julianne Finney, the Bird family, and veterans who suffer, suffer in a really proactive, responsive way in real time. And I think having that sort of responsiveness to their experience and to their emotions is absolutely critical to getting this right. It's a very difficult task to do this, but we need to find some way to actually have a soul and a purpose that takes into account that these are real lives. Every claim relates to a real human being and a real outcome." End quote. A key topic, topic of investigation throughout all our public hearings has been the support provided to the families of serving and ex-serving defence members. This Royal Commission is very much aware of the unique sacrifices defence families make in support of those who serve and that they too make a significant contribution to our nation. We know families play a vital role in members' wellbeing. Research shows ADF personnel perform better and serve longer when their families are happy, well and stable. But we have heard evidence from Gwen Churn, the Veteran Family Advocate Commissioner, that families continue to be let down by a lack of investment and support from defence and DVA. We certainly heard Miss Churn's frustration when she told us, and I quote, "Until every part of this ecosystem of support that is supposed to exist for families starts recognising them, talking to them and actually investing in programmes and support services for them, then it's just rhetoric and will continue to suffer and will continue to fray the fabric of Australian society." End quote. The wellbeing of defence families must be a priority for defence. It must be part of its people-first approach. If defence is to retain its people and meet its growth target of, of 30%, 30% by 2040, then families must be part of the equation. We've also heard from the Inspector General of the Australian Defence Force and several directors within the Office of the IG ADF. These directors included, included the acting director of the DSIR, which is the, the Directorate which conducts inquiries into deaths of service members, the Director of Inquiries and Investigations, which conducts inquiries into complaints and submissions from members and others, and also Own Initiative inquiries, and the Director of the Directorate which deals with the redress of grievance complaints by members. We heard about inquiries into deaths by suicide of service members conducted by the IG ADF since July 2014, and that at least until recent times, it appears that many did not involve a full inquiry. We heard evidence that the current practice is to conduct full inquiries where a death may have been by suicide, which is pleasing. We have also learned that it had been found that the IG ADF had not been routinely informing families of the outcomes of death inquiries in all cases, and that in a number of instances, this had not occurred. Inspector General stated that he was absolutely appalled that this had happened. It appears that steps have now been taken to remedy that situation and that an internal review is being conducted. While it's also pleasing to see action being taken, it does shine a light on the lack of focus on caring for families. We also heard that in inquiring into the deaths of service members, where the death appears to have been suicide, the Office of the IG ADF does not routinely obtain input from experts, who would be well placed to assist in determining the cause of death, contributing factors to death, service nexus and the recommendations that might be made. This raises questions about the depth of the analysis that has often been done, particularly where immediate causes might have been identified as relationship breakdowns, drug toxicity or a single motor vehicle accident. We have again heard evidence about the length of time which is often taken for inquiries into deaths of service members by suicide to be completed by the Office of the IG ADF. Pursuant to one review, it was found that the average time taken was at least 575 days and sometimes longer. We've also heard evidence that about, about the stress on families and others by reason of long periods of silence in relation to the inquiry process. We've heard from the Inspector General of the ADF, Mr James Gaynor CSC, about the discharge by him and his office of the functions of the IG ADF. A number of issues have been explored. These issues have included the perception of the IG ADF's independence from defence. Mr Gaynor gave evidence about the challenges with the staffing of his office and in relation to securing staff with the right qualifications, training and experience to undertake the work of his office. We heard Mr Gaynor is initiating a comprehensive review of the IG ADF, the first time such a review has been conducted in the 20 years since the position of the IG ADF was first created. We heard that the review will consider all aspects of the Office of the IG ADF, including its roles and functions, and whether the Office of IG ADF should have independent entity status. This hearing block has exposed further issues which impact on the mental health and wellbeing of present and former members of the ADF. We still have not identified any strong evidence to suggest that defence is prioritising the mental health and wellbeing of its people in a sustainable way, nor does it, nor does it seem to be responding adequately to the pressing issue of suicide and suicidality in its ranks with any sense of urgency. We commissioners fear the defence hierarchy is simply waiting for this inquiry to end so that it can go back to business as usual. We hope that's not the case. And regardless of the good work the DVA has been doing recently to clear the backlog of claims, its outdated systems and processes, as well as its adversarial approach to those it is supposed to be supporting, seem to be designed to limit access to entitlements. This must change. As we have previously said, this Royal Commission must be, must be a call to action and the time for that action is now. This inquiry has nine months to go. As we work towards our final report mid next year, we expect the Commonwealth and its agencies to uphold their commitment to fully cooperate and comply with this inquiry. Our team is working hard and we expect the Commonwealth to match that effort. For example, approximately 30 compulsory notices have been issued by the commissioners during the course of this hearing block. We have again faced significant delays in the provision of vital information from defence to compulsory notices, as well as other challenges such as late confidentiality claims, sometimes just hours before a witness is sworn in. These delays make the preparation for hearings more difficult. This cannot and must not continue moving forward. We commissioners and our team are working diligently to find solutions to the issues that are failing past and present defence personnel and their families, but the prospect of inaction keeps us up at night. Our final report cannot end up on a shelf gathering dust like those of the 57 related inquiries which have gone before us. Their recommendations never realised. That is why we believe there needs to be a permanent body to monitor the implementation of our recommendations and hold the government, ADF, defence and DVA, as well as other relevant agencies to account forevermore watches space. We will release a report about this body in the coming months and seek input from key stakeholders before finalising our recommendation to government. We just want to recognise some people who have been here pretty much for the whole two weeks and who have significant lived experience. Miss Julianne Finney, Karen Bird, Katie Staines, Deborah McKenna, Peter McKenna, Stuart Moffett, Taryn and her mum, Lorna, Adam, Bill and Alva and Jason Faruglio. We want you to know you're heard and you are seen. Just a reminder that it's not too late to have your say on matters relating to our inquiries. We're going to continue to accept submissions up until the 13th of October this year. Our next public hearing will commence on the 20th of November in Sydney. Further details will be available on our websites in New Courts and New Course. Thank you again to everyone who has participated in this hearing and to all those who have engaged with us here in Victoria. For those who are travelling, safe travel and we're going to now adjourn if there's no other issues.
Nothing further. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Miss Longbottom. Thank you, Miss Maud.
All rise. The Royal Commission into Defence and Veteran Suicide will adjourn to Monday, the 20th of November.